Well, we're glad to be back. Sorry that it's so tough. We actually, I'm gonna jump way up here to this one. Remember the compass? We were talking a little bit about how we engage in conversations about race together. And about the idea that so many of our conversations in education and in governance end up being on the right-hand side. We're in the intellectual, we're thinking, we're analyzing, we're maybe doing, planning, action planning, but we rarely allow ourselves to be over on the left-hand side, where we are, we are over there, we just don't always acknowledge it. And when we're in conversations like, can't we just have, we're in conversations about race, we often are very much over there, and when we can't allow that to be part of what we process together, it makes it painful. So when we have in our ground rules experienced discomfort, we don't mean experienced pain, we want to try to not have that be where we stay. It's gonna be uncomfortable, and we need to push through that, but we need to acknowledge if we're in a place where people are really suffering from this, we need to talk about why and what can we do differently. So I would invite you as we're going through today, and I've got some things I wanted to really push quickly, because we don't have much time with you, and so they may not be appropriate today. So if we're pushing too hard, if you feel the urge to lower the heat, that was one of the things we talked about is how do we stay in the work and how do we avoid the work? And in adaptive leadership, we learn one way we avoid the work is we lower the heat. When, I'll pull that graph up to show you. When we are up in a place where we've gotta do some adaptive changes, where we have to really work on where people's hearts and minds are, not just their technical, what we already know how to do, we just need to manipulate a little differently, but when we really gotta get into things that are about our values and our beliefs and our sensibilities, that kind of work requires a different sort of leadership. And it requires us to raise the heat sometimes, and to get to this space of kind of disequilibrium where we're sort of struggling, and that that, when that's where we can be most productive in moving a system toward that kind of change. Sometimes we raise it too high and we blow up, and that's not good. Someone gets hurt, someone gets kicked out, someone, you know, the work literally ends. So we need, we do need to lower the heat sometimes. Too often we lower the heat so much that we quit doing the work. And so that's what we'll have to try and figure out together today is, I think we could probably just say, one of the things we talked about last time is that something we do unintentionally to lower the heat is often we'll tell a joke. When things get uncomfortable, we'll say something kind of funny, and that allows us all to go, ah-ha-ha, and then the heat lowers. And sometimes we need to do that, and sometimes it's work avoidance. And so that was great today to put out. I feel like, I'm feeling like I wanna tell a joke. Like, I'm feeling, that's saying to me, the heat's pretty high in here, and I'm feeling the need to pull it down, and I don't wanna do it inappropriately, but I also, we may need to. And that's how I, that may be one of the ways we shorthand to put it out there today. And if you need to step out, just step out. So the idea of the compass is, we wanna be sort of in the middle. We wanna always be attending to all of that, because it's all there. And so figuring out, making it okay to have feeling be in there, and to, you know, people who don't like touchy-feely, well, we don't need to be always over there, that wouldn't be right either. We do have to be everywhere, we have to be in that center space. So we'll try to see if we can work toward that. This is what I thought we'd do today, we'd reflect on the last session a bit. I've got just a couple slides to kind of remind where you were. And then, we did move into implicit bias and achievement last time, so I do wanna spend some time with you on that. And then move into the conversations about policy. What does that mean to exercise policy leadership while we're trying to overcome the influence of implicit bias? And then equity leadership in general. I hope we'll have some time to do that and think about your next steps. This is the schedule in the schools, as a reminder. We launched, in a couple schools in August, the last week of August, but most of them in September. We started doing a little bit of norming, moving into norming with the schools in October. And then, talking about implicit bias as a cognitive process, and that's what we did last time, Albert and I drew that. Then we're moving directly into understanding implicit bias in the disciplinary disparities we have. And then, early 2019, we'll move into implicit bias and achievement, and we'll be at the achievement disparities. All throughout, talking about strategies for overcoming it, but explicitly wrapping up by going back through the strategies we've discussed and offered, and how they might. Our focus really is individual growth over time. Our hope is we find collective ways, school routines, patterns, spaces where this can continue, and so it gives some space for that too. So we have essentially 10 hours over 10 months, split out an hour a month, which is partly intentional, because of the way you get to, that makes a job embedded, you can get some ideas, you go do some stuff, you then come back and you reflect on what you did, that kind of thing. Partly it's practical. We have some Thursday early outs, in some cases we don't, so we end up with two half-hours in a row, which works way better than you would think, actually. So you're getting 10 hours in about five, I think so, we're about double time. Did anyone have a chance to watch the TED Talk? Everybody have some?
Yeah.
Cool, good. We'll get to a couple things on that. So these were the norms that we shared about how we engage the work and how we wanted to work with you. The four on the left come out of courageous conversations about race, which also developed the compass as a tool for holding to norms. And then, the top right is the one that we developed in this project with Harvard, who was working in tandem with us the first two years of this project. And then anonymity, you're recorded, so we kinda can't give you that promise, but we can promise we won't go out and talk about you as individuals. What you said individually, we want to be able to talk about the issues, but we won't ever say, you know, Janet said, I can't believe Janet said that, understanding this is important. Respecting each other's time, we're gonna, we end at three. Do we, Steve, do we have any other business we need to do? Anyone, do you have other business you need to do? So we'll be sure to end at three, we'll take a break midway through. And again, if you need to take a break on your own, please. Okay. The basic summary of kind of what we talked about is that we know from research that we're gonna interpret actions of people around us. In our case, we're especially interested in students, although families and community members as well. We're gonna interpret actions differently based on race and ethnicity, and when we reflect on that, it allows us to slow down. And it allows us to start to unpack the possibility that there was some bias in the way we interpreted actions. We had a quick video, you might remember the New York Times series, that had, it was about a two-and-a-half-long, minute-long video on implicit bias, and one of the metaphors in there was a fog, it's like we're walking around in a fog. We have all of these narratives and stories and perspectives that keep getting reinforced, and we don't even realize it, because it's sort of part of nature. And so what we wanna start to do is figure out what are those stories, and where do they come from, and how can we clear them out of the way? And there are, there's research that says we really can do, we can engage in some de-biasing activities, and we can engage in some reflective practice that can really help us to clear those stories out of the way. Problem is that new stories crop up again, so it's a constant process, and we're always gonna activate it. I've been doing this kind of work off and on explicitly for 25 years, and I'm constantly identifying new biases that I've either developed or never yet identified, needing to work on. So we're excited if you're willing to go there with us. Here's the quick definition of implicit bias: attitudes or stereotypes that affect our understandings, our actions, and our decisions in an unconscious manner. So the key is that it is not that we realize and there, we've got these things we value and we're acting on them intentionally, it's quite unintentional. We don't even realize that we're acting on some of these kinds of stories, or sometimes stereotypes. And that's key, is that they can often be counter to our values. So we can have an explicit value, that all people are created equal and deserve the best opportunities possible, and then when we're in the work, we can discover that we're holding these biases, that we didn't even know we had, that's causing us to behave in ways counter to our values. And some of those examples we were showing through, oh, this is, go right to, okay, never mind, I'm gonna back up, I'll come back to that example in a minute about the biases not necessarily connecting to our explicit values and beliefs.
That's an important point. I mean, just like, I'm thinking of the political discourse now, there's such a heavy divide between, you know, different people on an issue, and some of this is kind of our actions are kind of implicit bias, but doesn't mean, I mean, I just, I just think that's really key to help overcome terrible conflict. And implicit bias is not necessarily a mirror of values and beliefs, maybe I just think that's powerful.
We've found it to be really important to be clear about that with the teachers we're working with. And quite frankly, we've seen a real sort of patterns of change over the last two years, now we're into year three. The first year, they were kind of salty. There were students that came to the school board, you won't remember, and said, we got these things happening, and they felt like they were being called out as racist. And we recognize, we have to really set the ground so that that's not what we're here for, that's not our belief about you in practice. Now, the challenge is, and there have been a lot of challenges in the, in community, anti-racism communities of, well, all right, if you're not willing to call out racism, then is this just kind of one more wishy-washy way of approaching it? I figure our way of looking at it is, it's not okay to have implicit biases and act on them. You know, we have them, we don't wanna have them, we don't mean to have them, and we act on them, and it's not because we're bad people, but it's also not okay. So we have to take positive action to change. And that's, I think, for us, the key is, we're talking about taking positive action to improve. So it's not okay just to say, well, we all have them, so, well, can't do anything about it, too bad. Does that make sense? And we've seen, so we've seen a shift, I think this year, I don't know if you're, we're new enough in the year, we're still just debriefing, but I'm feeling like people are much more leading into the work, seeing it as a resource for them, than feeling sort of affronted by them.
Defensive about it. I actually had a testimony on, like, we worked with their IOT last year, and we were talking about how sometimes the teachers are afraid of a bunch of groups of black students, always in the hallway, you know, just goofing around. And she said, last year she wouldn't have dreamed of knocking up to them, but this year, because she had the implicit bias training, she said that she realized that she made some assumptions about them, just because they were black males, and she said that she just walked up, she took a deep breath, and she went up, and she said, guys, you know, it probably doesn't get to class right now, and this is not a good use of their time, and they was like, yeah, okay. And they went. So she has to have more of those kinds of experiences, interactions with students, I think, before it really is, you know, becoming a part of her. But just the fact that she shared that with other staff members helps them to understand that it is possible to interrupt those implicit biases that we have about them, and have better outcomes for our kids.
Yeah, I think a related part to that that I've been noticing is, the first year, we didn't do a lot on the fact that we have to talk about race and that colorblindness is something that really gets in the way of that, and we realized, we sort of didn't do it because we assumed it had been done, and we realized that not enough had been done. This year, I'm realizing that, again, folks are much more in it, and I think people are having more conversations about this than they did two or three years ago. So that's a good thing. It's still helpful to give them some framework for thinking about it, and so we do talk about the challenges of color evasiveness and how to be color brave in front of the TED Talk, or color conscious is the way we talk about it. It's still important to help, because people still don't have a lot of tools or skill in doing it, but there's a much more, I think they are engaging in those conversations more. Not always in an interracial context, and that's part of what also can make it tough in a school. And in our context, where we may have one teacher of color in the building, we're always concerned about that teacher of color and how they're experiencing the work. And that's one of the things we as coaches do, is explicitly check in with them, to see, you know, how is it going, because to be the one person, it's hurting.
Preach until it's quiet.
All right, the other thing is that we, the last point I think is the most important here. We all have them, yes, the first point, and we can do something about it. Research really does show that they aren't necessarily locked in and forever. Many of them we've developed over a lifetime, and so they're hard to get past, but we can. They've been able to show that, that trainings and things like that have been able to help people get past them. So we think about using implicit bias as a lens, and so this is one thing I'd like you as a board to think about. One of the questions that you were intrigued by was, what might this mean about you as policymakers? So the idea is, let's use this as a lens, let's really think about analyzing the ways implicit bias might be at play in leading to the kinds of disparities that we have. And part of that is that each of us at every level of the system think about how bias might be at play in the things that I'm doing. So, what does that mean across the system? It's gonna look different for you as school board members to think about how implicit bias might be coming into play than it would be for a teacher, for example. That we have to do that in all those different ways, really focusing on our own thinking, and then when we can, we wanna be able to extend it to then thinking about how others might be experiencing the settings that we find ourselves in. So how implicit bias might be impacting others? That's, that's kind of tough to get to, because it's really, the second bullet's really hard for people, and that's our biggest focus, is to help people to really get to a place where we can at least, I've talked about renting the idea that we have biases, we don't have to buy it, you don't have to believe me, you don't have to buy into it yet, but at least rent it, because the research is pretty compelling that we all have biases. Still hard, it's hard to accept that and acknowledge that when what you wanna do, for teachers especially, is do the very best for all your kids. What this work might mean for them is, I might be doing things that are hurting kids. That's a really hard step to take, and in 10 hours especially, it's pretty tough. And in places where there's some trauma, it's, you know, we're gonna have to really balance how far we go and how much we allow space for other difficulty to enter into the work. Okay, quick other reminders, schema. We talked about one mental process that really is key in implicit bias, which is schema. We didn't really go into system one and system two, which is essentially thinking fast and thinking slow. And if we have some time, I'll go into it more, I don't think I have to. Schema is the idea that we have these shortcuts, these mental models, these way of understanding the world that help us get through our day, because we have to make so many decisions, we can't like analyze each and every little decision. And so you might remember, we did the thumb wrestling partner activity, where the idea is, we gave directions to do a partner activity, and most people here in the US engage in it as a competition, not as a partner activity, because we have a schema in our head, we have a template for what it means to hold your partner's thumb down. So the direction was, every time your partner, you hold your partner's thumb down three seconds, you get a point, count how many points you and your partner get. And so people are all negativeness, when really they can just do one, two, three, one, two, three. So the idea is that's a schema. And that's what that was. The, a real problem with schema, a scheme is normal, it works, it's something we have to do, but it can cause errors. And so in this study, we showed, it was about the height of men and women, and we had models who were all the same height, we had to estimate their heights, and overestimated the height of men and underestimated the height of women, because that schema, that men are taller than women, is so strong that it causes us to overlook evidence in front of us. And so again, that's part of what we wanna try to think about, is we have schema in our heads about what it means to be X, or what X is, and it's so hard to get past that, that even in the face of counter evidence, we often don't see it. So we'll get back to that. And then, we had a couple examples, so the legal memo example of attorneys rating the quality of a law, of third-year clerk, on, based on a memo that was identical memo, except for the race of the clerk. How, this was an example of confirmation bias, if we think we're gonna see things, we look for them and we find them, and so then that ends up confirming our bias. And then, the, who are we watching was another example, the preschool teachers were told to watch for misbehaviors, and they ended up far more, watching boys far more than girls, and black boys far more than anyone else, when they thought they were watching for misbehavior. And so it's another, they were, they, this was their hypothesis, is this might be explaining the disproportionate suspension rate in preschool. And then, the police officers were asked to estimate ages of kids, and again, they overestimated the ages of black students of youth and underestimated the ages of white youth. And then teachers had a, there was another study where they gave them, a middle school student said they did these things, rate the severity of it, what would you do, what would the consequences be? And when they thought the student was black, they gave heavier consequences, and they connected the two misbehaviors, which weren't connected. So the second consequence was even more significant. So there's this sort of sense that we have, something's going on, something's happening, that we're behaving differently when we think we have a white student versus a student of color. And so we talked a little bit about where they come from, in discipline, because we were focused at that point on discipline, and talked about the stories we hear, and the historic narrative of people of color being dangerous. We had the pictures from the Gazette, was the example, we talked about that. And so the strategy, one big strategy that we offer is about slowing down and reflecting, and we give some tools and resources to think about how do you slow down, how can you reflect, what prompts can you give yourself to engage in that kind of thought process, knowing that it's really hard to see bias in ourselves. It's really easy to see bias in other people, and really hard to see it in ourselves, so hoping people can collaborate on that. So these are some of the things we gave teachers to reflect on, knowing we have disproportionate outcomes in disciplinary actions, how might implicit bias be at play, what could it look like? And then we give them the studies, could I have been doing, so we're asking them to actually reflect on disciplinary actions they've taken at this point, this is later in the year. Might I have been watching students of color more than white students? We already have done a bit of an exercise with them, where they are tracking, they're watching, kind of, and they, they notice that they tend to watch students differently than they would want to. We'll ask things like, when I look at my disaggregated data, who are these children? What do I know about them? And that's another big piece, what do I think I know about them? And do I actually know that about them? And how can I check whether I actually know that about them? And what does it mean? So if I know a student is in poverty, and I know it because they live in Breckenridge, do I really know they're in poverty, number one? And what does it mean to be in poverty, which I know because you live in Breckenridge? What does that really mean? And so getting them to sort of unpack all of that, what are some alternate understandings about what that student's life and experience and opportunity might be. So, we did a little exercise about students from Chicago, and we asked, what are the stories we hear in Iowa City about students, black students from Chicago? And we did our, the different things we heard, and then we asked the same question about white students from Chicago, and struggled a little, because the schema around white students in Chicago is college, not so much K-12, but I think what we find is, that schema for college students transfers into K-12. And so, I think out of that, what I wanted to invite you to think about is, understanding that we, we are immersed in these narratives about what it means to be a black student from Chicago, very much of which is what it means to be a black student in general, white student, Asian, Hispanic, I think we made those, we hit the major categories. Knowing those narratives, how might that affect our biases and the ways we engage with the data we see, the policies we work on, the actions we might want to implement? And so I wanted to give you some more practice problematizing stories, because that, again, is one of the major strategies for not letting implicit bias get in the way. So let me first ask, did you have a chance to think, I know it's been a crazy, it's only been two weeks, it has been a crazy couple of weeks, but you did have some time to reflect, did you, did you have time to reflect, go back and think about this? Or were there other things that were, that's kind of my summary of what we did together, other things that were notable to you or that stuck with you?
Kind of, we had all three of those questions, a little bit, kind of, on the process, and I, prior to, you know, reflecting on it, right, just, okay, where was I? I thought it was a very binary thing, that you look at disproportionality in discipline, I kind of felt like you would have, you'd hear one side, well, black kids misbehave more, so they're gonna get punished more, and then the other choice was, well, maybe the teachers at staff are having their implicit biases getting in the way, and I was like, well, I'm on that side, because that's the right side in my head. And now I look at it as, well, like, maybe the rule that is being broken in and of itself is written in such a way that it is targeting one set of kids and not everybody. So while anybody who breaks this rule is getting penalized the same way, the rule itself may be not written well. And so, as the policymakers, that's, you know, that's a heavier lift to try and think about, okay, how do I make a policy that corrects bad behavior? Because you don't want, you know, bad behavior all over the place, but not targeting specifically some kids and not others. And I haven't had the answer to that, but that's, I went from having this binary approach to, yeah, there's a lot more nuance there, and I think that's probably true of most things, but I didn't even think about it, until we reflected on it, and it was this or that. And I'm not mad at myself for being so binary. Not thinking of those other things.
But you got there.
Eventually I got there.
And you acknowledged the feeling side of the compass. Good for you. Anyone else have either reactions to that part, or other thoughts?
I wrote in the answers to them, I thought there's just a...
Awesome, look at you.
I did that very well, I don't know how to do that. As to how do you interact with the disciplinary data, I put, as I do with all that, I try to look at the numbers and compare numbers, compare past numbers and try to identify trends. And what assumptions do you bring to understanding the data? The hope that we are treating all students equally, but the realization that there is implicit bias, and that the reality is, is that we do treat black, Hispanic, and other minorities differently. And how might implicit bias impact your thinking about policies and discipline? On this one, and on this one, I have a open house in my shop every Friday, and Henry Harper comes in, and I have a lot of conversations with him. And my answer to this one, I put, it's important to make sure we are not discriminating, that we, that we are not discriminating certain acts, or disciplining certain actions by black students differently than non-black students, but also have to be careful that in doing so, students that do require discipline are not exempted because they are black. And that's the one thing I get, you know, with Henry all the time, is, you know, he'll be saying this, like, well, you know, people get upset, oh, you're disciplining those black kids too much. He says, not all those black kids, those six black kids are causing, you know what I mean, the ones that are causing the trouble. And I don't know if that just gets into that, that scheme or that stereotype, that it's like, okay, if we got, we've got a nucleus of six that are causing 90% of the trouble, if that nucleus then get expanded out to everybody that we see, because, and I also had my four-year classroom meeting last Saturday, and running into everybody there. And, you know, in a small school, it's the same sixty-eight kids from kindergarten to graduation, except for a couple. And, you know, there were probably three kids that were the, 90% of the discipline problems all through someone. And at different times, administration had better handle on the rumors. And also a friend that was stalking me on Facebook, I guess, I didn't know he came and knew everything about me, but I didn't know anything about him, I hadn't seen him for forty years. And, you know, there were probably three kids that were the 90% of the discipline problems all through someone. And at different times, administration had better handle on the rules. And also a friend that was stalking me on Facebook, I guess, I didn't know he came and knew everything about me, but I didn't know anything about him. I hadn't seen him for 40 years. And I asked him where was his wife? He says, well, my wife's out, 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 out east and she didn't make the trip. Well, I paid the favor and I looked at this face, well, his, his wife is black. And I was, I, and with our conversations, I was, I was thinking to myself, well, I wonder if Ralph didn't bring his wife because he knew, and my wife doesn't, doesn't normally feel, or she, she doesn't, she doesn't really feel she goes in the room, she doesn't belong. So it's, she doesn't really get a take on that stuff. But I just got thinking to myself with, with, with my friend that, and I haven't had a chance to talk to him to see if that was the case, but I almost think that part of the reason he didn't bring his wife in, is he was afraid that she might be uncomfortable in, in a, in an area that, like we were saying, you know, you and Tipton and me and West Branch, we really didn't encounter each other at all in our school.
So as a board member, if one of what you're trying, you, you had this potential dilemma. We've got disproportionality in our office referrals that look like this. What are, what are questions, what else would you need to know in order to know how to think about a policy response to the challenge of disproportionality?
I think sometimes what we struggle with is we just see the numbers, probably not too many of them in schools. So that, I, I, when I first started, I would just see the numbers and try and react to those. And now I see the numbers and I try and talk with staff to see, or go into the schools to see what it's actually like in there. You know, some of that may be needed, some of it may be from implicit bias, some of it may be just different students. There was once, we had one that was on seclusion and it was about younger kids being secluded more than maybe older kids. And after kind of going in and seeing some of the younger kids and some of the actions that they can do in the classroom, like my assumption was kids that young probably didn't have that much violence or acting out or whatever, but there really was. So it was like, you know, we had, there's a few, two, two young, but in reality, a little more different side. Putting the two together is a little easier to see, so we have to think policies towards more active, same old same.
So you were sort of developing a story that maybe things are happening in elementary schools that are even less aware. You had to kind of go test out that story a little bit, get some data.
Yeah, because me just looking at the numbers is different than me actually proceeding and talking to staff, that's, and we've got those experiences.
So I was hearing your point of Daniel Parker's report, because I couldn't remember, in the suspensions data that we have a graph, we have the unduplicated counts. So it's actually students, not, not actual events. This one is, I don't think this, I think this is all, all office referrals. So it could be, one thing is, it could be one student that has a thousand office referrals. And it could be 500 students that have two. And you don't know from these data. And so that's a great policy question. Like, I can't make any policy decisions unless someone looks at this with another, at another level of gray science. And so one of the things I want to talk about later is, what's your responsibility as a board? Is it your responsibility to dig into the data and do all that? Or is it your responsibility to make sure someone is digging into the data and asking those questions? And, you know, on different things, there may, you may have a different answer. I would suggest when we get through all of this, there's so much that's out there that you can't be the ones to dig into everything. But you can ask the questions and make sure someone is.
Well, on the, the last meeting, we had that, that equity. And that was after we had our first meeting. And I, I reached out to a staffer, a minority staffer that I trust, and said, I know I'm missing some stuff here, what should I be asking? And they gave me some questions and, and I put those out. And I got some emails that were like, well, why are you asking this? And, you know, it's like, well, I didn't, I, I, I tried to respond to the question without, you know, that, but I'll be the first to admit that I don't see it all. But when I get to that situation, I want to reach out to someone for, for help and, and guidance and everything that way. And I was, I was really kind of surprised by the, that response by some people. So what do you got to insinuate in this? Okay, I think that's part, part of our reasoning. And I think that's part of why you were pushing us in that first session, is, is you got to go to those uncomfortable, you know, race, it's, they're not comfortable questions. And I mean, the easiest thing is to say, okay, yeah, it's there. We've got a lot of IP people that, it's their profession, they're supposed to do it. I'm a community representative that way. But I think we got to seek out, seek out assistance when we get into those situations because, you know, I, I admit, I, I, I looked through the thing and I didn't come up with those questions to ask. Although the one, and then I was giving myself the one, it's a very, right there in front. Yeah, that, that's a very simple one, I should have come up with that. But I think it's important that we, we reach out and try and give as many voices that help us with them when it comes to those decisions.
And hopefully the asking of the questions becomes habit.
Right.
You, you might start thinking, I've got to ask some equity focused questions and have a list of questions, but eventually it just becomes part of your, your work. And so it's already starting to for you, because you recognize, oh, I could have asked that. That means it's starting to become the more natural part. And then I think part of the question, and so we'll hold this to the later one, is that's a good thing, bringing, offering up that you have emails, why are you asking those questions? And so then that's another part is, you do insinuate certain positions and certain policy positions when you ask questions. You know? And so being able to think about, what, what do I really mean to insinuate? And what do I not? And how do I make sure that at the board table, I'm able to ask questions that really do cause us to pro, but not set up the wrong message, not deliver the wrong message to everyone else? So we can get back to that one. That's why I wrote those up there. All right, well, I would like for you to think a little more, just for a few minutes, about the Chicago example, and then we'll do some, some more storytelling and problematizing. And so this is one, I want you to think about the stories that you hear. And what are we predisposed to believe because of the stories we hear? And how am I acting on those stories be problematic? And I want to act, I'm just going to go ahead and take us to a certain place. Because one of the things we were saying is what we hear, the story of students from Chicago is they come from, if they're black, they're coming from the South Side, they're coming from traumatic experiences, they, it's probably a single mom and the household, all of these sorts of, they've, they've been flee, they came here to flee violence, they're in poverty, they don't have resources. A lot of those things are part of that story we tell. And what we're understanding is even if we might know that for one reason or another a student doesn't, we might only know two or three of those characteristics that may fit in a particular circumstance, we still bring all the other stories with us when we don't stop to say, are they really in poverty? Do they really? All those things, we just bring it with us to that story. And so I was reflecting on the TED Talk when, the last time I played it, and recognizing that Melody Hobson talked about her being up in Chicago as a poor, black child. And what it was like being in the, her mom not having enough money for the rent, and so her job as a super allowed them to live in apartments that were quite functional. And so they'd heat their bath water in a hot plate and that sort of thing. And so if you think about that as the story you hear about a student coming to our elementary school, what does that mean? What do you think about Melody Hobson? And that's what we're really trying to get, to get to the level of. When I hear that story, what are the assumptions I'm now making about Melody and her potential as a student in our classrooms? And would those assumptions have been fair? And so I, I just, if you kind of can remember that story she told, and you think about things like discipline or achievement or other things we're trying to unpack here, what might come, so let's say you're at a work session and you've got some schools at the work session, and someone shares with you a story about a child attending that school that maybe lives in a basement, their dad, and your dad's girlfriend. What does that story do to you as a board member? And how can you, well, what does that do for you as a board member?
Just a story of been living in a basement with a single parent.
A student of color.
I, I don't know. For me, it's kind of, I'm that student. I mean, I'm from Chicago. I came from a very poor family. So it's just like, you got to give me more, what? So? I mean, it's sort of like, they can be just as successful just because they're from that background. I, I'm not understanding the limitations. So for me, it's more questions on, okay, help me understand, what are you seeing in the classroom? What does their living environment have to tell you about their ability to succeed? Because then I, I want to remind people, I am that student. I'm successful. I mean, I'm able to go back and talk to other kids to say, I was there. I was you 20 years ago. And you can, you know, push people to see beyond your poverty level, beyond your family level. And sometimes, I mean, for me, maybe it's unfair that I then expect students to sometimes carry that burden and speak up and say, no, you're not going to put me in this box just because of where I grew up, because that's how I was raised. You don't let people limit you because you grew up on whose stance. So I think for me, maybe it's a little bit of pushing back on, well, what are you seeing? I mean, what does that have to do with their ability to learn? And also that unrealistic pressure that I'm just like, as a student of color, you're going to advocate for yourself. You're going to be your best advocate.
I was just gonna say, it's, it's really easy to go from, here's a story about a specific child and their specific circumstances, and then that becomes the avatar for all black kids, right? Like, oh, this is a general story, it's not a specific story. So all kids fit into that story. Your brain takes that train without even thinking about it, that was a specific story that turned into a generality.
Yeah. Your brain does do that. That's exactly right. Yeah. And if you don't stop and say, wait, what is my brain doing? Then that becomes the story upon which you make policy.
I keep thinking, I guess, I get to the word we're getting on, school balance. When we look at high FROs, schools, we have the, it's not so, we, we as a community, take those schools, the kids in there are all poor and they all can learn. So if you take the, the kids from those schools and mix them with my school now, now my school's not going to be able to learn because we've got those kids in there too. And we hear that in the community. So that's kind of like a assumption that's out there, that's kind of a search, it's kind of a subset, take a small thing, generalize it, and you, I'll make it kind of look at it that way.
I was going to say, I think too about the media, we talked about the pod earlier. When we watch the Six O'Clock News, always see things about people in Chicago or families in Chicago. All of that gets into our brains. And so that's what you have. But if you don't have the opportunity to actually meet some people from Chicago, to actually talk to some students, families from Chicago, that's all you know. And so I can see where people would say, so yeah, all of it, because that's all you see. But, you know, if you're in an environment where you get to see some, like, people who are lawyers, who are dentists, who are, then you have a whole different picture. But I think it's, you have to have exposure to that. And you don't have exposure to that, all you have is the Five Hundred, the Six O'Clock News, or everything else that comes across the media that says, or the family that you hear about. And then it's like, oh, well, it must be true that all families are like that, they live in the basement, they, you know, parents don't care about their kids.
And that's part of what I think we've been able to really push the folks is, okay, you live in the basement with your father and his girlfriend, what does that mean? How does that affect achievement? How does that affect discipline? How many white kids live in the basement with their boyfriend?
It could be a wonderfully loving relationship and caring and nurturing for the student, the student could be killing it at school.
Yeah.
Because they've got a lot of support. And I mean, there's, it's the, it's the generalization of the assumption that you have to give them to know that specific instance, like the name we're talking about. And you've got to look at the instances and not generalize. You have.
And I guess, that's where I think a job of a policymaker is difficult, because you're not creating, you know, 13,000 policies, right? You're a kid, you're trying to do stuff that's global, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to make a connection, it's hard to make this connection too. And I think Ruthina was right, you know, that there's, there's no limitations to, to, to any child. All our children are capable of being very successful. It's just, are we doing the right things and having the right curriculum and everything to reach them and make them successful? Was it Ernie Duncan and Emma Coates that had a soft bigotry of low expectations?
Is that actually George Bush?
It's George Bush, okay, excuse me. I guess I'm terrible. But I, but I, but I, but I still, but I still, very close. But, you know, that, that's, that's, that's something, you know, we, we got to make sure too, is that when we, when we get the data and we see that we don't let those schemas come in and say, okay, it's, it's those kids from Chicago, and yeah, well, they're going to succeed. No, they can be just as successful as Ruthina or the Galen, the, the video, that way. And she was going to be successful no matter how many barriers were in front of her, to, to hear her speak and that, so.
Well, I think it's fair to say she's an exceptional person.
Well, that, that.
She, she, what she has achieved and where she is is pretty exceptional.
Right.
Pretty unusual to be CEO in a Fortune 500, I think it was, company. And that's great and important. And my worry is that, what about the average kids?
Sure.
You know? The average kids deserve, and, and I don't want it just to be all, well, it's terrible then to have these stories, because the stories come from a place as well, and they can come from a place of compassion and care. You know, we want our kids not to be in poverty. We want our kids to not experience disruptions in their lives, and sometimes they do. And as a school, we have to be able to respond appropriately to that. So I don't want to say we can't at all talk about some narratives that, that, you know, help us think about how we engage with our students better. The challenge is when it's always from a deficit perspective, when all we focus on are the things the kids don't have. And so I think maybe that's a question. What, what do you know about, do you know children in, black children in poverty from Chicago who have strengths? And what are they? You want to share something?
Like, of course I do. I mean, there's some of their strengths as far as educational, they're some of the smartest kids in their classrooms. I mean, they're reading above average, but sometimes they feel held back or maybe looked at as not getting there all in their own merit. So, but that doesn't limit their ability, they're just like, yeah, that's just part of being that black kids from Chicago in Iowa City, sometimes people are going to question my ability to succeed, and when I succeed, question how I was able to do that. So, I mean, I would see, yeah. So I know kids, but I also know white kids from Chicago that are living in poverty. But as soon as they say, oh yeah, I just moved here from Chicago, people, I have heard people ask what suburb, like, kids say Chicago. I think they know the difference from Chicago and Oak Park. And they have to say, no, I grew up on the South Side of Chicago. And all of a sudden, it's like, people have to readjust, like, wait, we're, huh? So it's, it's interesting to see when that happens and to see sometimes. and to see sometimes how kids of color have to survive when they are successful, when they have strengths, and sometimes it may not be celebrated the same way.
I was gonna say, you may not celebrate the way I communicate. You may not celebrate that because I'm not doing it exactly the way you expect. And I think when students of color walk into a classroom, sometimes the expectation is that you let go of everything that's part of you. And you have to adjust and listen to culture, who are expecting you to do, you know. If that's the way you want, if you want to fit in, then you gotta leave all the stuff that belongs to you out there.
And we're gonna.
Yeah. And again, just as intelligent.
So what we want to try to do is knowing that these are the stories we are wading through, that's the fog that's in front of us as board members. How do you make sure that you're not ending up making policy decisions based on stories that may or may not be at play in the moment? With t-shirts, it's a different level of good teachers. It's a, do you really, are you holding the expectations that you think you're holding? Why are you, we had teachers in year one who recognized that they had specifically lowered standards for their students of color in a place of care. Like, I, I care for these students. I don't want them to be embarrassed in front of their peers. I will, I have lower standards for them, recognizing that that was not necessarily the, the most equitable, that it was very much from a good place.
Sure.
It was very much wanting to do the very best for their kids, and they recognize out loud in front, and I was impressed by their bravery and honesty to be able to say, I need, I'm now realizing that that, that came from this whole narrative that may or may not have fit the kid. And I can now rethink how I diagnose and what it means when I diagnose. And that's part of the thing, and what does it mean? Maybe they are in poverty, and maybe they are hungry, and so we give them breakfast. We have now dealt with the consequence of that piece of being in poverty, okay? Now what else does it mean? And when it gets down into the deeper, well, their parents don't care about school, that's where, again, it gets so embedded that it's so hard to break out of, to assume that we have a deficit space we're coming from, that they come with so little and instead of they're coming with so much.
I think one of the things that I, I guess I value as an industry of elementary school was that, I'll always say to staff, you know, yes, we have poverty. Perhaps we have parents who are not able to or don't care to do whatever they need to do for the kids. Can you change those things? You cannot change those. All you can change is between eight and four, the time that you have with them. So building those relationships with those students and with those families, that's the best thing you can do for them. So I think sometimes people look at that as another way to avoid, well, they're poor, they're poor, they're poor. And you can't change that. That's not the bill or the system control. But you can change how you view them. You can change how you have expectations for them. Those are things that we're asking teachers to take into account in the exam.
So I asked the question about, could you talk about a student from Chicago that you know who is black, who doesn't fit that stereotype? Because that's one of the strategies that you can use to overcome your bias, to de-bias, is literally imagining a counterstory. Better yet, seeking out a counterstory and finding an actual student or family member or community member, but sometimes the safer thing is just to imagine. Because it really, it, it's about where our brain goes naturally. And so when you start imagining, it breaks that. I'm gonna go this way, and when I hear that story, then it becomes this. The way to break it is to imagine those stories. So it's a tool strategy, you can hang on to that. Why don't we take a quick break? Because I then want to, I think we can fly through, we, we got into a lot of the conversations around achievement we needed to start, so that we can dig in on the achievement next. So how long have the break been, Mark? Ten minutes?
Yeah.
Ten minutes? Okay, all right. I have one twelve, so, one twenty-two.
Thank you.
I'm on screen replay, but then you told me if it packed up in the first fourteen, then you, they can give it the magic.
Oh, the magic, the worst of experience, the writing process, and it just, it's, it's.
That's what I'm saying.
It's really, I mean, it's only for our, our students. If you connect, but luckily it didn't work for me.
Yes, and I think I know what you're, you're, alright, so, um, it was just straight for tiger. And I went with one.
No, I never had the buttons in it, so I have to take it back and I found it. It gives me a.
Thank you.
Alright, I do.
Oh, I was chilly yesterday. Yeah. Because it was, that's, that's really gnawing. That, because of how, how.
So that eventually.
Yep. Because I'm just trying to.
So my.
This. How they will be. That's.
I think there's not a clear statement.
Yeah.
And I, and I, and I know, I've talked about, as if it was a problem, I did my confession.
That chili did look very tall.
I know, I was like, I'm gonna tell you.
Because I was waiting, you know, they ran down the church and said, jump up and shout. Another guy go off.
It's like, you know. It's mental health for me.
Soon I actually did look good. I don't make very good chili. I don't know why. And so I have to wait for my brother to make chili, because then he just makes me a pun, and I just go. He's like, you know, I get, I'm like, no, this works.
And they go orders, and you know.
No, seriously, he knows that I don't, Malone doesn't like my chili. It's like I'm missing something, even though I follow what he tells me to do, it just doesn't taste right.
That's spicy, so, is that too spicy?
I'm like, well, see, I'm no girl that gets a bowl and grabs a hot sauce. That's the sauce, he just teetalking, well, like, I don't know, I'm not there yet. So I like some chili. So after I saw your picture, I text my brother and I was gonna make him make the chili, so. And so I'll raise my hand over.
Better way.
You do rough in school.
Jeffrey, just when you have a question, it must be like this outside. I know, it's a cold.
Oh, so you both are running.
It's more of an amble for the schools.
But that's good.
I get to the end.
I'm doing the dead kid this year, my first one.
Awesome.
That was a cross-country, remember?
Yeah.
Many years and times ago. And it, I think it's in my head that I know I would do so much worse than I, I used to, so then I don't even want to do it, because it was in my head that I failed somehow. Like, I know, I was thirty years younger when I did it. And about a hundred pounds lighter.
But you can also walk it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a colored, hurry rain.
And the.
I love schools. I make a donation, thanks.
I paid for my registration.
Oh, they don't pay for children.
But yeah, it's like register, and it's something like, I make a donation, don't you love?
I was, our family, you know, they said, what school are you from? It's on the corner now, and I was just gonna talk to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
There's four more.
Yes, that's a good.
It was for the registry, my, it's new, two or three more, but it looked like a middle person. It looked like being, uh, like a, uh, uh, uncertain international science, they'll make people like that. So, but, no, Monica made a stencil and then we did everything from there. And the first ones were fun, and then it got crazy, and then we started taking pictures of the stencil. I still have some girls, and with the rains, you save yourself, but I just hope to action someone. I think you're gonna take this back, I actually, I guess I go first.
Oh. Successful. Serving me all.
Still, it's very.
Who's good, you know, see, that's my wife.
It's our thing, because, um, we were at Costco, and they have like the multi-pack, and Malone wanted the Twix, Snickers, and plain and this.
So you got peanuts?
Yeah, well, I did eat a peanut and an apple and a Milky Ways. Which is Milky Ways. That's like eating the almond joy. It's like the special.
Almond.
Oh, you're an almond joy?
They have almonds.
It's nasty.
Yes, it's almonds and joy together. It's an almond joy. You know, almonds.
No, that's like, you did not want to help me say commercial come on.
Sometimes you feel like, but.
Somebody, no.
If you were to say pounds, I would agree with you.
No, not, why even me?
No, we're just like, serious.
Almonds and joy.
I can tell. Almonds, oh, beige away.
But it's coconut.
I love coconut, it's also good for you.
Okay, I like coconut, like.
Coconut, sugar, and chocolate almonds together.
Right. That's, no.
That's just not natural, man. A pile of coconut.
Yes, they definitely white.
It's all, it's all dummy coconut.
Yeah, it's not, it's not toasted.
Sorry, okay. So what type of person eat Milky Ways and pounds? That's more comparable, because Milky Ways has nothing crunchy, and I guess, and mouths have nothing crunchy.
You know that one?
Sure.
Are we seeing Snickers about the peanut?
No, because Victoria has a peanut allergy, she likes to catch.
They're not definitely eating apples, and being the same fact is over there, eh?
Milky Ways, I like Milky Ways.
Ew, it's like.
I like Milky Ways.
I'm not making friends at the table about candy cookies today.
Well, I chose Reese's Peanut Butter.
Yes, peanut butter.
I love, I love Special Dark.
Well, see, most people don't, I like whetma collard. Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about.
It's like peanut butter, crisp, yeah, covered in chocolate.
You and my wife get along because she eats peanut and it's whetma collard.
And I'll have a ring, it looks so good.
And it's literally, it's whetma collard.
Don't you remember those commercials from like the eighties? What, whetma collard? Yeah, the whetma collard, the whetma collard. That's the whole commercials.
I miss this whole eighties.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring you on Tuesday.
I love the reward.
Yes, it's just the whetma collard. And when I was in college, um, working on my masters, I just got to get the grossest candy bar ever. Now looking back, chunky.
Those things are nasty, but I was seriously going.
What's a chunky?
It's just, oh, I'm sorry, like, did you want to give me a chunky?
See, it's next to the.
Oh, it's.
Just letting you all know. Okay, we're talking about candy.
Oh no, I just went for mother. I'm like, I want to let me try. A chunky, it's square, or I think it has raisins, nuts. It's nasty.
Ew, it doesn't.
No, it's, but I don't know why, it was like, I got fixated on it, and I was, and it was terrible. But it's like the grossest. Yeah.
Well, wait, it's.
It's square.
Yeah.
It's square.
It's not this big.
Well, silver and red.
Yeah, yeah.
Silver and red.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, I won't torture you with a chunky.
Okay, good. Yeah, the raisin part sounds nasty.
No, it's like raisin nuts, and I think it was something else, and that's why. It just had stuff.
It had chunks in it?
Yeah, no, seriously, it was just, it was, like, it was a big chocolate, which is.
Do we have you to thank for the? Thank you. Oh my gosh.
Yeah, that's just why I would choose.
Oh, they're all, they're all good ones.
I don't really like raisins very much. I'll eat them in, in the cookies, and that's just about the only place I like raisins.
And I think I started eating them because Costco, that was in the mall, on the way walking there, had a sale. And I was like, what? No, I was like, oh, no.
Now I'm not having implicit bias in my, in my chocolate.
Yes. Alright, okay. So how are you doing with this?
Okay.
You're good.
Alright, okay. Well, we'll keep moving through implicit bias and achievement. And just to share some of what you've already really been talking about, what the research says, can be the impact of stories and stereotypes in the realm of expectations. I really think it's kind of the core work, is what, what do we expect students can do? And then from that, what do we do because our practice is impacted by our expectations? And it's both our planned full practice and our in-the-moment fast response practice that's impacted by the expectations that we hold. And the experience of students, we're able to see through research, that they actually pick up a lot that's going on. So just a few, there's forty years of research about expectations that's in varying ways and varying levels and varying focus. Not a huge amount of implicit bias research in education around expectations and achievement, which is a little surprising to me, but there are some. The research on implicit bias just ballooned in the last five years. And much of it has been in the areas of policing and courts, so there's a lot there. There is some, as you saw, in education, but not as much. But we do have this long history of expectations research that uses slightly different language. So they talk more about stereotypes and different backgrounds, rather than the sort of cognitive process and implicit bias kind of language. And so they have found in several studies where they've looked at data, huge data sets, that elementary teachers do often, peanut shooters who are subject to negative achievement stereotypes, so they will treat students of color differently in the classroom than other students, than white students, basically. And then in general, their expectations are lower for students of color. And from disadvantaged backgrounds, some of the research was on poverty. There's quite a lot of research on students, teacher expectations and students in poverty. A fair bit in England that was looking at country of origin more than race, so the immigrant status and that sort of thing. And that when you had an outcast immigrant group in a European country, that that would then be the characteristic, the disadvantage that they would. that that would then be the characteristic, the disadvantage that they would see showed itself up in teacher expectations. In two thousand fifteen, they did a study where they asked black and white teachers to predict the future performance of specific students. So students that these teachers knew. And the white teachers were thirty percent less likely than white teachers to predict that specific black students would go on to earn college degrees. And when they asked them about specific white students, there was not a racial difference. So it wasn't that one or the other just had higher standards or it was, they did have differences in terms of their expectations.
That's really bad. I mean, that's super troubling. I mean, yeah. And when Steve Seawood, who comes out in the attention, you know, first time. I was thinking the obvious, right?
It's good, and part of what we're trying to have you do is state the obvious because the obvious is an obvious. We don't realize, we bring all this crap to it, so we have to put it out there and state it. So thank you for doing that. That's, that's the intention and we'll dig into these a little bit. I'm kind of flying through them, but we'll, um, dig into them a little bit here. This is just that it actually matters. They're able to demonstrate that expectations do have a kind of long lasting impact on students and their future. And that the students themselves feel and see and identify the differential treatment. And they often internalize those expectations and that's part of the cycle. And it's part of what becomes so insidious of, well, that my students aren't achieving and they aren't, you know, and so then it becomes the cycle of, what do we set up for students that causes them to internalize or to perform in certain ways because of the expectations that we have for them? And then obviously we know our achievement data is disproportionate. This is all stuff that. You've been exposed to a lot. The teachers have not seen the data as much as you've seen the data. So that's something that was a little bit of a surprise to us was that we expected them to be a little more well-versed in their own data. They have their own classroom data that they absolutely look at all the time, some of the system level data. They don't see the same patterns and you just don't see the same patterns in a small classroom that you start to see when you get your numbers. So that's something we need to work with a little bit to share the data, help them to think about that. And ultimately, the question I'm posing is about do I truly believe all children can learn? And I would say sit around the table and hearing you talk, I truly believe, you truly believe all children can learn. And I truly believe that all of us still are influenced by the stories we hear that suggest, but may not. And so that's what I want to kind of help us to dig into because I think that's the hard work. Keep unpacking where these unhelpful narratives come from. So, um, like we talked about the narratives around violence, we have narratives around achievement as well that are intentional and serve a very strong purpose in a society that claims to be a democracy and yet didn't give everyone the right to vote and for a very long time or to disenfranchise entire groups of people in many cases based on race. And so this is just a historic picture of kind of the civilized white man and the uncivilized black man. Stories that go along with that about kind of who has the capacity to learn and grow.
Especially when I think about that achievement at the national level, it's not so achievement. We have the press that reports out on, you know, the leaders of our country are saying, let's, let's build a wall. But they're not talking about building a wall from Canada, right? Which has a war and just, just keeping the Hispanic, Mexican population out as opposed to the white Canadian population. So I think that kind of unfortunate some of that. As you said, that's what you're scared to do. That's what you can hear. That's weird about you. And really that guy.
Yeah, and even if we don't believe it, it's still a part of, it's part of what we hear. That wall becomes a metaphor for boundaries. Maybe. It really might. And we might not want it to, we might not mean it to, but it means something. I gotta protect some people from other people. And I may engage in some advocacy around some policies that you're making from this place that I don't even realize is being fed. So putting that out there and being able to then, what, what's the impact of that story? How might that play itself out in how I'm thinking? Thank you. Um, the other thing I wanted to then share as a current example, and I want to talk a little bit about code switching and then, um, I think we'll have plenty of time to then switch and think about leadership in general. Because I really do think that when, I think we all have to figure out why have you been willing to allow the achievement gaps to persist as we have? And, and I think we, we, meaning all of us. I mean, I started and getting involved in federal education policy in nineteen ninety-two. They reauthorized the Elementary and Secondary Education Act in ninety-four. That is what then later was reauthorized under Bush to become No Child Left Behind. So it's been around since nineteen sixty-five. In ninety-four, the federal government said you have to disaggregate your data by race. And you have to pay attention to the subgroup performance. So if you think you're an excellent school, but you have groups of identifiable children who are not achieving at high levels, you shouldn't consider yourself an excellent school. And that was nineteen ninety-four. And we have had the data for all of that time at our fingertips to know we have not been educating entire groups of children in the same way. And yet we haven't done anything about it. And part of what I want to challenge us is to figure out what's going on there in general, but also for us. So I want to share with you code switching as something to think about. To entertain or rent the idea that maybe some of what happens when you encounter people with different vernacular, it affects our presumptions and our assumptions and then therefore our expectations about that. So code switching is in, comes out of linguistics typically or originally, most specifically, it's about speakers of two, two or more languages who switch between languages. And you, originally it's really about even in a single sentence. So an English speaker and a Spanish speaker will go back and forth in a individual sense.
Spanglish.
Spanglish, yeah, sure. And it can be languages as different as English and Spanish. It could be dialects within as well. And so we also talk about code switching broader, much broader than that. Well, I'm going to stick on language, but we now are even talking about code switching around behaviors, around so other social interactions and that sort of thing. So the way I behave in the neighborhood is different than the way I behave in the school. And I kind of often as a kid know which is supposed to be where, but sometimes I don't. But a lot of times it's a natural process of switching from one code to the next. So, um, assuming you've had a little bit of exposure to the idea of code switching or that's at least enough. Do you have ideas about who has to code switch around language in our schools right now? Can you imagine who might have to do that kind of code switch, might have to do code switching? Any of our, uh.
English learning students from, I mean, we speak what, eighty different languages in this school district? So all those students would have to be comfortable in the ability to code switch. And sometimes code switch while they're at school. Because they've made, I mean, stories from my husband that sometimes new students come into the classroom and they don't speak a whole lot of English. So they're partnered up with a student that speaks their native tongue. And so that student is translating and helping them with the art project. And then the one that's act serving as a translator will then have to talk to my husband in English. So I mean, they're doing it right there a lot of the time.
There are students who have to code switch?
Many culturally, students may, maybe they speak English, but they have a different cultural experience than what's here or school. They try to relate to more of the dominant culture is in their classroom or in their school. Turn on.
I, my family's from Appalachia. And so I was trying to get my dad to talk about how much he had to code switch growing up from the y'all to the.
Oh, yeah.
From the eight to the, yeah, all of it. And he was, it was a hard time remembering. He's eighty-six now.
You know why they say y'all? I guess there's, oh, you. Rock the Oats in Texas.
Well, their, their, their plural of y'all isn't all y'all. But I'm pretty sure he had to code switch and I, I'm pretty sure I had to in elementary school. Cause I'm pretty sure I grew up in my home with vernacular that wasn't academic English. But I also had parents who were college educated, so I'm not sure. Like, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I know there were some phrases I used in the country other than Sierra Bluff, actually.
I know what codes are.
Yeah, that's true.
I spent five years in England as a kid with my dad, the Air Force, and we didn't talk around them. And so I had sort of an English accent, just couldn't see the terms and stuff that he might have done. I, I do remember a little bit in shock of, yeah, not trying to talk differently in third grade and look at my old man. Cause I just did not did it at all.
Yeah, and a lot of stuff came along.
Yeah.
All right, so I want to share with you a video about specifically African-American vernacular English. One of the dialects that we have here in the United States and I would say here in Iowa City. And just invite you to think about, I mean, just listen, but we'll have a little discussion afterwards. What points were especially important is kind of the big thing. But I want you to feel free to share if there's things you disagree with or if you have some emotion coming out of it. And anything you might want to think about further together, not today, but coming out of this. See if you're going to be able to hear that.
A couple thousand years ago, the ancient Greeks decided that all.
Is that loud enough?
I saw you with a girl, man, looks like you, maybe she's aware.
I was gonna see if I can turn up the volume. Ah.
A couple thousand years ago, the ancient Greeks decided that all languages besides ancient Greek sounded like bar, 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 bar. So they started calling the people who spoke them barbarians. Or at least that's the popular story about where the word comes from. There's actually similar words in Latin Sanskrit, so the word probably goes all the way back to P I E. But the point is, the Greeks really did refer to everyone who didn't speak Greek as barbaros. And they really did think of them all as barbarians. After all, from their perspective, ancient Greek just sounded right and all the other languages sounded weird and wrong. And if they couldn't see that, then it must be because they're stupid, smelly, uncivilized barbarians. You'd think that after all this time, we would have figured out that people who speak differently than you aren't just doing it because they're dumb. That whatever people are raised with winds up sounding correct to them and that no one's language or dialect is inherently better or worse than anyone else's. But no, two and a half thousand years later, we are still struggling with this basic concept. And in my own country, there's one way of speaking in particular that people could really stand to actually learn a little about. I mean, there are loads of different ways that people speak in the U S, but there's one that people don't even usually think of as a legitimate accent or dialect. Instead, they just call it slang at best or broken English at worst. What I'm referring to has been called many different things over the years, but the standard term among linguists and what I'll be using for the rest of the video is African-American vernacular English or A A V E. No matter where you live in the U S, whether it's the West Coast or the East Coast or Chicago or the deep south, black people often have a way of speaking that's very different from white people. Hmm, um, black people have a way of speaking that's very different from white people? No, you can't see the white one. Black people have different ways of speaking from white, eh, you still can't really see him. Black people have a, that just looks weird. I'm gonna be honest, I have no idea how I should illustrate this. Okay, you know what? I give up. From now on, black people in A A V E are purple, while white people in general American English are pink. By the way, general American English is a dialect of English, which is very close to what I'm speaking right now. It's the one that people tend to use in professional settings in the U S. Something I want to clarify is that not all black people speak A A V E. In fact, it's actually incredibly common for black people to speak both A A V E and general American English, making them, well, they're not bilingual since A A V E isn't a separate language, but is bilingual a word? Oh, cool, it is. So yeah, not only that, but A A V E varies a fair amount from region to region and even from person to person. But at the same time, a black person from Los Angeles will very frequently sound way more similar to a black person from Chicago or New York than to a white person from L A. Why is this? Well, there are two main theories about where A A V E comes from. The older of the two theories is that A A V E diverged from early modern English, just like American English and British English. Whenever different groups of people stop talking to each other, they inevitably start speaking differently. Sometimes they don't talk because they're too far away from each other, which is how the different dialects of Latin became more and more different until we wound up with French and Spanish and the rest. But it can just as easily happen for other reasons, just so long as people are talking to other people in their group way more than everyone else. And even though the slaves who were brought over from Africa would have had to learn English at first, they would have definitely been talking with each other way more than with white people. A situation which continued even after slavery ended, all the way up until, well, it's still kind of that way, actually. Over time, this could have easily led to the divergence of general American English and A A V E. A A V E was concentrated in the southern U S for most of its history, since up until the twentieth century, that's where almost all black people lived. But during an event called the Great Migration from around nineteen ten to nineteen seventy, millions of African-Americans started moving to the north and they took their dialect with them. The other theory about where A A V E comes from says that it didn't just diverge from general American English over time, but that it started out very different from the English that white people spoke. When the African slaves who were brought to the U S got there, they wouldn't have spoken English at first. Initially, they would have spoken in Bundo or Betty or Yeruba or Edo or Hausa or Ezone or Fulu or Igbo or, um, wow, there are a lot of languages in this region. Anyway, the theory says that these languages mixed together with English when they got to the U S, creating a sort of hybrid language that over many generations became more and more influenced by and similar to the English that white people spoke. Both theories are probably true to an extent. A A V E is mostly English, but it also clearly has at least some influence from African languages. Exactly how much influence came from which source at A A V E's birth is still an ongoing debate in linguistics. Now, I've spent the majority of the video so far talking about A A V E, but I have yet to actually talk about what it sounds like or what makes it different from general American English. You've probably actually heard it before, but a lot of people just assume it's a series of mistakes and mispronunciations when it's actually just as rule-based and internally consistent as general American English. Phonologically, a couple of differences are that in A A V E, the T H, th and the th sounds change to t, f, d or v depending on the context. And also consonant clusters that have a stop sound as their second sound are often simplified with the stop sound being dropped. So both of us think that we'll find the desk there would become something along the lines of both of us think that we'll find the desk there. There are other differences depending on the region, but those two are among the most widespread and I think the most noticeable. But what people tend to notice way more than differences in pronunciation in A A V E are its differences of grammar. A A V E will often sound like it's just dropping words all the time, but it does so in a very consistent pattern. In general American English, we have a habit of contracting words, for instance, making she is the one into she's the one. But there are some circumstances where we can't contract things, like we can't make I don't think she is into I don't think she's. Well, as a general rule of thumb, wherever general American English can contract, A A V E can delete. She is the one becomes she to one, but I don't think she is can't become I don't think she. Another difference people tend to pick up on is the fact that A A V E treats double negatives differently. In general American, I don't have none means that you do have some, but in A A V E, it would mean that you don't have any. In A A V E, multiple negatives reinforce each other, while in general American, they cancel each other out. I think it's worth noting that all the things I've talked about so far in A A V E aren't unique to A A V E. Dropping linking verbs happens all the time in languages besides English. Like this means I am hungry in Chinese, but there are only two words. It literally translates to I hungry. And the first part of the Muslim Declaration of Faith, La Ida Ha Ida Allah, word for word translates to no God but God, but means there is no God but God. As for the double negative thing, multiple negatives reinforcing each other actually used to be the norm in English. Shakespeare and Chaucer would regularly say things like, nor never none shall mistress be of it save I alone. Or he never yet had no villain, yay, name, um, well, it means something like he never yet had no violinist said. Unless you're willing to say that everyone who speaks Chinese or Arabic as well as Shakespeare and Chaucer were all doing it wrong, it doesn't make any sense to say that A A V E is wrong either. But I'd say with my favorite, last, most of what I've talked about so far has been about how A A V E simplifies things, reducing the number of possible sounds, shortening consonant clusters, dropping words. But the A A V E tense system is arguably much more complicated than that of general American English. When speakers of A A V E say things like he be working, people who don't speak A A V E often assume that this means the same thing as he is working and they're just not conjugating the verb. But he be working is actually a usage of what's called the habitual be and it actually means something along the lines of he worked sometimes or he is in the habit of working or he has a job. It's a bit hard to translate, actually. So he be working could actually easily be true, even if the person you're talking about happens to be at home right now. It's an entire tense that just doesn't exist in other dialects of English. This is probably my favorite example of how people can be very quick to just write off others as doing it wrong. But when we actually listen to each other and take a closer look at what we're saying, we find that what looked at first like a simple error is actually just another tool people use to express themselves, one we might not even have. Linguistics doesn't often have much in the way of practical application. It can feel a little like philosophy at times, interesting, but not immediately relevant to much. But the biggest practical lesson we can learn from linguistics is that everybody's speech is just as rich and complicated and logical as our own, even if it doesn't look that way at first. And when some people's speech is labeled correct while others is labeled incorrect, it's usually just because the people who speak correctly also happen to be the ones making the rules. So when you hear someone say something that sounds wrong to you, before you correct them, maybe take a moment to ask yourself if instead of a mistake, it might just be a different way of getting your ideas. So when you hear someone say something that sounds wrong to you, before you correct them, maybe take a moment to ask yourself if, instead of a mistake, it might just be a different way of getting your ideas across that you've never heard before. In my experience, the world starts to look like a much more interesting place that way. Catch you guys in my next video.
You tell me what you think about that.
I spent five years with Creole in Belize. And, uh, one of my favorite ones was "teef, teef, a teef, everything even," or "bad laugh." So when a thief, thief said thief, everything's even, or "bad laugh" is when a thief, thief said, or when a thief takes another. And down there, I was talking with Charlie. English is, English was the dominant, or was what this, was the governmental language, was taught in the schools, but without, everyone was at least bi or tri-lingual in the country. Because in the schools, it was, it was proper British English. But, the, the people from the Latin culture spoke Spanish. There was, in Belize City, which was nine percent black, was Creole, was very predominant. Um, you go down into the south into Pentagorda, there was even Maya languages were still being used in some areas and Creole as well, and combinations of everything. So when you're talking about the Spanglish, oh my gosh, at home, when my mother-in-law's talking to somebody, and one thing, you know, microwave in every language is microwave. You know, they'll be going along, rattling along microwave, yes. That's, that's, that's American contribution to language role. Uh, but, uh, yeah, it, it, but, you know, from an educational standpoint. You know, it's, and it's, and it's true, and, and boy, I, I enjoy, and I, and I always enjoyed Creole, and it was, it was hard for me to, to pick up at first, but after a while, you know, and it's the rhythm too. Sometimes you just, uh, yeah, they speak so fast you don't understand, but you just kind of know from the rhythm where they're going with it. But, you know, from an educational standpoint, um, you know, we, I guess we should, you know, not devalue people that have these, uh, language traits and things like that. But, you know, for the citizens that we're, our future leaders are trying to create in our country, um, I guess language of language is important that, you know, we all be understood and, and that way too. And, you know, we were talking last night too about, you know, when we're teaching Spanish, there's this Spain, the Spanish that is, that is the Spain version, and then there's the Mexican version. And even in our own dis, you know, even in our own districts, you can have an instructor that's kind of leaning more toward the, the Mexican version, or you have one that's a Spanish. So, uh, it's a good question, I don't know. You know, I, I think it's important that with our students that we have, uh, a lang, you know, that they have the language skills when they go out into the workforce that, and, and into life, that they're, they're gonna be successful. But, uh, you don't, we shouldn't also recognize that these difference, that, that differences are, are what make us unique and what make us special. And, and they have an important role in, in, in our lives and, in, uh, you know, how, what makes us up.
A few things I thought about were, kind of all over the place, but one was the testing that we give. It's only in English, especially the younger ones, if they don't know the English, they're not quite, but it's reading the question, the answer, even math works, you know, not so many just numbers. So that puts them at a disadvantage in our schools. When we get data back, they say people are not proficient, or not looking at the wrong picture there, that they can't read the question themselves, and the teacher can't agree to them, or determine that's a disadvantage. Another thing I thought about was, uh, just in general of whatever it is, if it's a black child that's speaking, you know, like they normally would, it's not necessarily proper grammar, right English, the teacher's correct, and maybe make the student feel devalued or less to the period to themselves. So I kind of thought about that as well. Oh, uh, just in society in general, in this country a lot, you know, you really hear the phrase, "that this is America speaking." So, it's America to multiply everything responsible, and we pick that one as the one that we did. We, and say, we, most English-speaking white pick, people have to say, say, "you have to speak this way too."
It's the, the grammar and vocabulary that we teach in this school, that's what everybody, that's the right one, that's what we're teaching. So, when you hear, if you're not speaking that way, you may be some, well, they haven't learned it yet, or they just can't quite take it up. Or, uh, the thing that popped into my head is that you get hung up on the grammar and lose the context of the conversation. I just have me, I was listening to, I listened to Sports Talk Radio all the time, and they were talking to, uh, Cora Ratnack, I can't remember who it was. They asked him, you know, "how are you approaching this year differently than last year?" And the first thing he said was, "well, I'm being more smarter about it." And, you know, I was like, I just cringed at the thing. The irony that he said "more smarter" bothered me, but then he went on and had a very detailed description of how he is being smarter about it. And the context made great sense, and it was a great story, and the whole time I was stuck on the, "maybe still more smarter." And I started to lose the connection to the actual context of the description. I think that probably happens, you know, if you're going through, reading that paper, the legal memo, right? And if it's, you start to see weird words or things like that, and you're gonna start just picking off those little grammar things and that. Read it for what it is, and lose some.
I think that the last question, the difference between a speaker of A, me and other language, I think there's a bit of a bias for, uh, students who see, where English is not their first language, in that they're new at getting or learning a new language. Whereas, uh, A A V E people, um, people may perceive that being that you're not, you didn't follow their work, or you're not able to learn. Do you think it's, it's less revealing, this process?
I think, I mean, it's sort of along the same lines of Janet, is that sometimes I think, um, it can be hard in schools when teachers have students who constantly co-twitch to A A V. Um, that they then have that thought that, well, they're, they're not gonna be successful because they can't speak proper English. Or they, they won't move beyond their current poverty situation because they won't ever be able to go out and find a job and be successful. And that may not be true, it could just be that, um, they're more comfortable in that setting with that teacher to really be themselves and invite them into a world that... Some kids don't invite people that haven't lived with them or been around them. That, sometimes I don't think teachers see that as a sign of them trusting you. That I'm able to drop my guard and be more myself like I am around my family and my friends. So that's, sometimes can be a sign of, "I trust you because I can be myself."
I hate to always go back to Belize, but, uh, dirt poor country, and that's not an insult, that's just reality. And its educational budget for the nation would be, we could probably put a few big schools together and that'd be it. No certified teachers. And, uh, eighty percent proficiency, or eighty percent literacy for a nation. So, uh, and, and I would go through, I was telling Charlie, when I would go from the ranch to the, in my district, in Orange Walk, I'd go through four villages before I got to the biggest, or the, the, uh, Orange Walk town, which is the capital of the district. Governmental center. I'd go through all those villages and during the school year, I'd pass all these kids in uniforms going to school. School that would be lucky if it had a light bulb, or a fluorescent light, not, I mean, no air conditioning, Caliche Mall floors. I remember when the prime minister came and they had a zinc roofed school and they had a concrete floor, he came out and they played a record of the national anthem. And I sat down halfway through, right, sitting and standing right next to the prime minister, I felt very embarrassed. And they asked the anthem after that. But, uh, you know, they do it with, with so little. But they, the one thing everyone does is they do speak English, because that's the language of the country. And everyone's successful like that. They don't, you know, as, they, they go home, they'll, they'll speak Spanish, but, you know, in the schools, it's, it's that. So, I don't know if it's something that, you know, we should be, you know, are we doing the best service for students if we? You know, and, and, you know, we recognize we have language, and, and everyone speaks, may, may be bilingual, tri-lingual, multilingual, that's, that's great and everything like that. But, you know, I think if you're gonna succeed in our country, that having mastery of, of the predominant language is, is the best avenue for success. I know when, when, uh, the one gal on the, on the, uh, video. Boy, uh, very, uh, you know, if you were to not have the picture and have her speaking, you know, you might have a hard time placing who is actually talking. You know what I mean? Maybe, I, they, um, but I, I think it's, I think it's important from an educational standpoint when they're having this. I mean, we gotta recognize for D L L, and I was talking with a D L L teacher, and he's dealing with some students from Guanamala, and they've got a third grade education. And they're here in America now. So, "well, what were you doing before you came to, came here?" "Well, I was working." They went to school till they were three, till third grade, and then they were old enough to, or they could go and make a living, so they were working in the fields. And so now they're here, and with a third grade education, they're sixteen, and how are they, how are we gonna get them through our system and, and get them to where they're gonna be successful? They can't add because they, their, you know, math is at a third grade level, they're sixteen years old. We've only got a few years to, to try and catch them up and get them going, so I'm rambling, but.
They're, kind of illustrated something that was in my head, and I think it goes to the way you're saying, maybe having lower expectations for black students. And I, I sure you see a black man on TV speaking the, you know, standard American English, and the response is, "awkward," very articulate. You don't say that about a white guy doing it. So it's, you don't expect them to speak standard American English. And what they do, it must mean they're really smart and really worked hard to get there.
Because, I've already established, for what it means to be a black man.
Having that expectation is purple, and you're setting the bar really low if that's all you expect is, oh, it's being able to break it.
What assumption are you making about whether or not that person knows, like, the standard English? I mean, I know standard English when I go back home, where I'll speak it, is there?
Right, correct, correct.
But doesn't mean that I don't know it.
Correct.
And I think there are a lot of kids that know.
And I.
And if they were in an interview situation, they had to pull those kids up, if you're doing this.
And it's just, uh, I think sometimes that people make those assumptions that, "oh, I'm hearing kids use slang or A A V," which was new for me, like slang, evans, but okay, we'll go with A A V. Assume that, oh yeah, they, you know, have to learn the right way to talk, because if they don't, people will always limit them to, you know, the janitorial positions, or they won't be successful. When sometimes, again, these kids can use proper English when they need to. But sometimes, it's always the expectation of, "you have to change in order to fit into our models, in order to be successful, in order to hit the mark. You have to give us what we're expecting you to see, instead of being able to meet them where they're at and work with them." I mean, just because they're saying "y'all" or "it ain't gonna happen," doesn't mean they're not understanding the conversation or the work that's being presented to them.
But think about the amount of energy that takes, maybe they have to stay in your world all day, and I never get a break. I never get to go back and use, but another student could walk in and just be, "I'm just here, and I just have to, I just have to worry about the content. I don't have to worry about how I speak, because that's already acceptable." So there's a lot of energy that our students of power may be, certainly they don't really have to, because we're not accepting where they are. So we're saying that their way they're speaking is inferior and is wrong.
It, it, it's communication, and it's clear. What you just said is super clear. Why can't we, and, and more smarter, or whatever, whatever the.
Yeah, more smarter.
Very, very clear communication. There's no confusing what that, that player was talking about. So, I mean, it's.
My, I have to say, with my son, his very best friend, who was white, when they graduated from high school, we took them out to dinner. And I said, "what are your plans?" He said, "well, we think that we might take a road trip." I'm like, "where are you going?" "I'm thinking California someplace." He said, "go down and..." And I was like, "oh, okay." And I said, "well, you know, if you're going somewhere far, maybe we kind of trail you out." And so this kid said, "yeah, I think that would be more better." And I was like, "clearly, it could be that they're..."
It's very clear.
But we have a hierarchy of language, and certainly there is a language of power, and we do have a responsibility as a system. I mean, we have set that as a system.
There's a world we want, and there's a world that there is.
So teachers have reacted to this in their exit because of a couple of ways. And one is, I never really thought of that vernacular having a grammatical structure that kids have learned. And so here I'm thinking, "they can't learn English." But no, they did learn English, and they've learned it quite well, and they know which things not to do and what to do. And so it, it gave them this, it really had been an indication, a diagnostic, that the kids weren't able to learn English. And they were gonna struggle. And so it caused some of them to start to say, "maybe that's a bias I'm holding that I can get rid of and start to engage with them differently in my classroom." And then other teachers have really been thinking about the research I'm reading and, and literacy, and how do we best instruct kids? And, and what you will see in a lot of the mainstream research literature is that when, when students are speaking, you correct their language, you correct their grammar. And it's in the process of speaking, when it gets corrected, that they will then learn. The problem is that most of that is pretty mainstream, quite researchers. And when you start to have a much more diverse body of research, you begin to get new and different research questions asked. And so there's also, and learning that when you do that in a culturally insensitive way, it causes students to tune you out. Because what they say is, "this is my mom whom I love and my grandmother whom I revere speak this way. You, who don't really seem to like me very much, tell me that's wrong? Who are you?" And they actually will stop the learning process. So it's also part of sort of the policy question of, what's the research base that we're using to inform our decisions about instruction? And, and is it a diverse research base? And again, it's not something you have to answer, because I would not expect you to be reading researchers, which is a very complex and controversial, uh, body of research. But there are people, there are professionals in your district who do, who love that stuff, who wanna dig in, and who probably, frankly, because as a nation, we haven't been using the diversity of reading research in our policy setting, probably haven't been exposed to it. And they probably need an opportunity to learn about some new research findings as they're making decisions about instruction. they're making decisions about instruction.
And assesses.
And assesses. Yeah, with Vest, it's really, if a student is reading it, but their, their American accent sounds different, it can be marked wrong. And that's not the teacher's fault, or the student's fault, but it's a, it's a, something to be thinking about, and how we interpret the results that we're getting.
Well, the computer testing, too, is like, you're reading, or it's, you're like, too, when you, you know, you don't understand the question, you're not getting the people to answer it, either.
Yeah, and I don't know what the research says about how wide that, what that does to the results, but we would, that would be an interesting question if we knew that. People are studying that stuff, so... So, I, my question to you was, why do you think I shared a video on A A V specifically, rather than code switching generally? And so, I wanted to get into some of the cultural stuff that's coming along, going back to that, I'm gonna play another video, thinking about how it relates, not just to disproportionality in achievement, but also in discipline and school climate. So, let me share this next video. So, this one is not just achievement, although that's part of it.
If I'm gonna come from my own home, or I'm not with my friends, or whatever, I may say something that I know is grammatically incorrect, or that you know that isn't a word, or, but I don't care, I'm with my friends, they know what I mean. But when I step outside my house, you know, where I am, you know, in this type of environment, or any business environment, or if I'm at the bank, or if I'm at the grocery store, you know, I gotta make sure I articulate myself well, for society reasons, for the fact that I need to make sure they know exactly what I'm talking about, or they understand exactly the point I'm trying to get across. Two guys walk up together, and they might dance each other off and say, what's up, Scott? Or they mean, homeboy, what's up, brother? You know, you might be my ride or die, you know, my homie, my ace, you know? My broski, you know, we say stuff like that, and they'll be like, okay, why you can't just say friends? Hi, friends, you know?
It's like, we, we, we finna talk our own way, you know? And it's just like, we have to have some form of individuality, you know, in the way that we speak. And so, using slang, or using this so-called inferior English, a, as they would say, is definitely a form, a some type of form of rebellion. Uh, and it's also just a form of, of expression for us to be able to express ourselves in some type of unique way.
Trying to be successful in this world, you feel as though you have to, you have to be able to speak on their terms, and behave on, on their terms. So, it's, it's twofold, it's, it's a, it's a, um, it's this need to fit in, and there's also pressure put on from the other side. If you, if you don't speak, um, and, and appear in, in ways that are similar to us, then you probably are not that good. If you speak in that other, um, you use slang words, and you, you, um, speak in, you know, in African-American, um, then you, maybe not that, maybe not that smart, maybe not as educated, um, so you, you're forced to assimilate.
And trying to speak with someone else that's like in a corporate world, they would look at those kind of things, you know, and that depends on what kind of jobs that you're looking for. And grammar is a big thing in this society, so speaking correctly, that's proper English, you know?
Um, a lot of, a lot of corporations, or a lot of jobs and stuff like that, if you speak too, too heavy slang, you know, like a lot of slang terms, like, they'll look at you like you're a thug, or they'll look at you like, you know what I'm saying, like you're a gangster, and that you're not properly educated, or that you're not as smart. And a lot of times, it don't really have anything to do with that, it's just, um, the environment that they was brought up in.
I, I feel like even in our own community, you get a lot of people that judge us, or they're harsh on us, just because of where they were growing up, or who they grew up around, or who they surround themselves around.
If you are born African-American, you have to prove that you are not one of the bad ones. You have to prove that you are not, um, lazy, that, that you can fit in, that you can do this. So, and, and, and how people, how people, how outsiders assess, um, what type of person you are, is based on a lot of things. One, your language.
So, how does that relate to what we've been talking about, do you think? What were some things you heard them say that resonate with us?
Everybody has slang, right? Even white people have slang. When I was in high school, somebody asked me, how you doing? Very partly clapping, right? That type of, so, I don't know, I, I, you know, I guess slang and how you talk with friends, I understand, everyone has their own, their own thing. But when we're in an educational setting, if we treat, if we treat language like we treat math and science, will we accept H two O to be H two O two? Well, H two O two is, will kill you, or H two O is what we all need to survive. And, you know, I, I, I know, we used to have a thing of imaginary math in elementary, so if the group agreed that two and two was five, that was okay, well, no, it's wrong. So, um, I don't know, I think, I think when, when we're, I think it's, I think grammar's important when we're, when we're teaching language. Um, I think language, um, is important. But I, you know, I, I understand cultural differences and, and what, what people bring in, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, when you're in there, you have to work harder, because you're trying to, to be, to be in that. But I don't know if you can, and, and, and looking at it from a teacher's standpoint, I look with my daughter, I always say, well, you gotta tune into the teacher's frequency. It's like, teacher goes into the classroom, and there are twenty-four radios, thirty radios, you gotta tune into the frequency that the teacher's... She's, oh, the teacher doesn't like me, and all this, and say, you gotta tune into her frequency. She don't have to turn into yours, yours especially. Maybe I'm wrong, that's, that's how, that's how, that's how I see it. But, uh, I think it's very, I, you know, the, the, the challenges that our, our teachers have, and it's an art, uh, to be a teacher. But, uh, to try and get all the different, you have the religion dialect, this dialect, that, that, um, and try, and I understand, you know, everyone has their own, their own slangs and things that grant to it. But I think it's important in an educational setting, that if we are trying to turn out future leaders and, and people who'll be successful, and not to say that people, students, and I have to admit a certain amount, when earlier, when we said, when, when we had the thing about the kids that would go to college would be successful. Every time I hear that in my, on my own mind, I say, kids that don't go to college could still be successful, uh, that way. So, uh, that way, but, no, I, I, it, it's, I think it's important, I think, you know, the, the, the languages, and, you know, don't be judged, gosh, I wish, I wish we wouldn't be judged, or, but, there again, it's like the world we wish we had, and the world that we do have, unfortunately, we are judged. We're judged on how we speak. And unfortunately, that, that's, that's kinda quick and automatic, that way, or steam, I shouldn't say, shouldn't say that's automatic, but it's, it's, we have that, that kind of ingrained in us.
But maybe that's one of the implicit biases that we need to look in there, and looking at, is some of the stuff that I took away, uh, was all of this, all of the speakers know, whatever that vernacular is, a prom ring bush, they all know it, they would choose in certain settings not to use it, whether with a friend's family, having fun, at your college, friends, whatever. Um, and the one gentleman was even saying, yeah, sometimes it's hard to express ourselves, and he was, brilliant, I mean, I get that. But I wouldn't want teachers to hear students talking in hallways, you know, amongst themselves and friends, hearing, you know, quote-unquote, ungrammatical English, and then judging them that they're not smart enough, they're not called material, or not even post-high school, whatever path, though, not just college, but any, you know, work environment, to judge that that student is not, doesn't have what it takes to be successful, because of their, their language being, you know, that's the judgment, I think, is really terrible, because then lower expectations, or, you know, provide challenges to these students, or the one student, uh, one general student, sometimes people want to hear that thug, okay, so then we start paying more attention to them, and, and the discipline, um, issues start coming out. So, I think there's a lot of, I think this is one of those implicit biases that we have to pay and really pay attention to, and, and not, I mean, you need to know the proper English from the right settings, for certain settings, but not judge when you're not in those settings, that, that student can't be successful, right?
There's a lot of, maybe all of them, on there, since, uh, using the language to fit in, fitting in was the, the theme. And, uh, we recently had a, my company got bought, and we have a new parent organization, and they had, uh, they've been pushed towards diversity, and they're hiring everything, and they had their diversity director, I'm not sure if that was, it was, came to talk to our, um, kind of managerial group, and was asking us how to go about hiring people, and a lot of people talk about having, you know, finding people that are a good fit. And he's like, so when you're out there looking for people who are going to fit in, you're either asking them to already be that person, or you're asking them to change to be that person. And our parent company looks at it more of, you're going to create an environment that's going to be accepting of the differences that people are putting in, and you're not going to make them fit in, because that's implying that there's something wrong if they don't. And so, it was a different mindset for a lot of us hearing that, you know, and you have a vager head, well, yeah, I don't want people to change, but if, even the language of, you must fit in versus, we're just gonna accept you how you are, and, so, that was kind of the connection I was making, but, I'm not, I'm not connected to our school district, but, connected to work, but I, I think climate, I guess, is gonna be part of that, if you're saying, you need to change who you are to fit in here, that makes it an unhealthy climate, I guess.
I think one thing, then, I don't know if I took this right way or not, Phil, but when we're talking about your daughter, um, turning into the frequency of the teacher, I think that's one of the arts in teachers, being a good teacher, and being able actually to adapt to all of your students in a different way. Like, you know, we've gone from teacher in the front lecturing the rows of students, to collaborative spaces, and kind of learning, and learning the way your kids learn best, and it may be different for every different kid, and, so I think that, that's part of the art of teaching, and good teachers are very able to do that.
No, I understand, but I, that, that I'm just expressing to you what I express to my daughter, and I'm not, uh, I had one, and, uh, thank God, she's got a good enough job, she can afford the therapy she's gonna need for the rest of her life, as her, as her parent. Uh, but, uh, and, and I'm just, I thought this was an opening and welcoming environment, where we share all our thoughts, so...
I wasn't attacking you.
And that, but, uh, that's, that's, that was my parental view of that, and I understand the difficulties teachers have, and I know it's an art, and, and in fact, the, the one that passed away from Hoover was, that's, that's his exact words. And I asked him, and he said he's still learning, uh, before, Jeff told me that he's still learning, uh, that it's an art, and he's learning more how to do it than it's a craft, as any craft, you work at it and you get better. If things you find that don't work anymore, you go change your, modify how you do things.
And I think what I was hearing is that there is, that, that teachers are gonna have both, sort of, what's this, what's effective instruction, what works? And we're gonna hopefully have some more diversity of the research on what works, you know, available to them, as they're making those decisions. And we have to think about what is supportive to the students, what's culturally responsive and appropriate with students? And what part of my own biases are being triggered? In when, and in what ways? And that's what we're really trying to get all of us to examine, is when am I triggered? When is, am I realizing that I may hold a different belief about the possibility of our schools, of our teachers, of our students, of our leaders? And where is that coming from? What's the narrative that's behind that? So, that's what I was trying to get us to think about, is that we've got some real deep-seated stories that we have to clear out, about the abilities of a lot of the students and their families and their communities. And by being explicit, did you say you were being too obvious or something? We have to be that obvious, in order to put it on paper and start to see, wow, that really, I went from here to there, and there was no reason I had to go from here to here, let alone up to there. That's part of the process of trying to get rid of that thought, clean it up, clear it out, is be as explicit as we can and problematize as much as we can. So, um, these were our reflection questions for today. How can I reflect on my presumptions about students? On how students and families might experience school? Um, what might the biases, like, what if these are at play in my policymaking? What could it look like? And what am I gonna do over time to mitigate that influence of implicit bias on my own policymaking? I'm gonna always ask myself, what if the stories I hear and tell are not fully true? What am I gonna do about that? How do I use those stories? And how can I open myself up to understand things differently? So, I just wanna hand this out, this is just an excerpt from the workbook that we're, um, over here, let's do some of this, um, that we're preparing for the teachers in the program this year. Um, and I'm not gonna ask you to walk through this, because we talked a lot together earlier. This is just a section where we're talking about problematizing stories, stereotypes, and dominant narratives. And so, it's related to the exercise we did around the stories we hear about students from Chicago, is to go through and just say, what are the dominant stories that we hear? And what we try to do, as much as we can, is, is multiple iterations of this, and we'll, like, we did, we talked about black students, we talked about Asian students, we talked about Latinx students, we didn't get in, I don't think we got into immigrant students in this conversation, but, or maybe we did, I don't know. But, but there's lots of stories that we tell about lots of groups of students, so let's put them out there, and then let's just start working them through.
I'm sorry to ask such a basic question, but when we say problematizing story, does that mean, uh, just questioning it, I mean, get this, unpack it?
This is the process, unpacking it is a good way to think about that, is saying, the story we're telling is probably not fully true. We can be pretty sure of that. Over the story we're hearing, it's probably not fully true. There's probably aspects of it that are true, because it probably wouldn't stick if nothing like, said, oh, that kinda makes, you know? But they're probably not fully true, so let's, let's make that story a problem, and dig into it. What does it really mean? What does it do to me that I got this story in the, in the background playing out? And then how can I get rid of that influence of that story? How can I break that connection, so that I can start to better understand and make different decisions? So, this walks you through some, a lot of what we hear, folks will do is, they will talk about stories, and then they'll stop talking about race. So, we have to kind of say, all right, now, where's race in that story? Because they'll, well, what does it mean to be a black kid from Chicago? Well, they left a violent neighbor. Okay, where's race in that story? Because that, that, race isn't in that story, really. It is, it actually is in the back of our minds, but it's not, when you write it out, it's not. So, we're really trying to get them to say, is race really a part of that? And what is it making me think about race, that I have that story playing in the back of my mind all the time? So, that's that one, is really thinking about, what does this mean about race? And being, and be kinda, um, elementary, like, sometimes for folks, it feels a little elementary, well, this is what it means, I mean, do I have to actually say it? And the point is, we do have to actually say it, because when we don't, we don't ever really address it, and we don't then problematize it, it's just, it's part of, yeah, it's part of what is, rather than, why is that? Where did that come from? What impact does that have on me? That's where we're trying to get people to go with that. So, I'm not gonna ask you to go through this now, there's an example here, that's kind of a conglomeration of examples over the last few years, things we have heard, um, and then, so you can kind of get, see how it works. And the idea, again, is this is an ongoing process, this is something that you get in a PDF form and kind of do over time, and you're not gonna sit down and do every single dominant story... say that I did every single dominant story of every single student of color, but over time, you know, you might choose, oh, it's Hispanic Heritage Month, let's, let's walk through some of the stories we tell about Latinx students. You might do that in a PLC one day, you know, or something like that, like trying to figure out ways to get this into, to be more habitual in our practice so that we can start clearing them out. Does that make sense? Okay, cool. All right, let's take a three-minute stretch break and then we'll go into the last little chunk of it. So do you hear shit?
Yeah? He's working right now, that's why I was leaving him back because he's working on the athletic. I didn't tell him, I said, Steph, I was there if you wanted to see Steph, I was outside the truck, come on over. Yeah.
I just gotta throw it out there.
Because I haven't told him for like four years, I think he's happy to see what it's like.
Okay, Steve.
Oh, all right. What's that?
I'll see if I have it.
Yes?
I'll see if Kim can make it.
No, 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 I just, because you mentioned that I, I, I'm in Nevada right now.
Yeah. Well, and my daughter, so my daughter's minor in English. That's right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if Kim can print one page for me. I'm just realizing I didn't pronounce, or I didn't bring my exit tickets in. Give me one second, I'll turn it over to you. So I was talking to her, she's really starting to think about a lot of these things.
Yeah. That's all right. Maybe you're the next John Finsen.
Sean, I was late going back because Matt's working on the PowerPoint for the presentation.
So we've been talking about this and I can't believe this, I'm here as young. It's just, you know, it's common for people who identify as, and it's, it's complicated with those simple ones and those, but it's becoming more and more.
Is there a recycle term?
There is. I think that.
Are we using it?
Yeah.
When we come to coffee day, you know, nine hundred.
A lot. I buy my K cups from Amazon and my wife, she says, why don't you just put those on the regular? And I'm like, I need them more often, I need a box of those. First thing, I need to be able to order them when I need them.
Those cheese drinks go off too, so.
And there's a couple of them in the office.
She's numb and, and Belice is not.
A lot.
A lot.
We have three hours and I put three big cups over here, that's all.
I don't know how you're not like jumping out of your chair in time.
I drank two times before I came in today. They're only the little four cuper cups, I have a small.
But still.
I'm the only one that drinks coffee at my house.
And your heart pressure is okay?
It's great. It is awesome.
It's so unfair. I have high blood pressures and I'm like, two cups of coffee.
I drink one while I'm doing laundry and cleaning the house and then I drink another potlouse or even paper's one, so.
That's an impressive amount of caffeine, I'm just saying. It's a lot. It's a lot.
Yes, fascinating. The way you can transition. The teacher, the pastor.
Kim Henry?
Yeah. Services for that. She, her son, her son had a, that he choked himself in the Jeep and it was. That's one of my his thoughts.
I didn't know that was a prerequisite. I didn't know that was a prerequisite.
I know, I come up with crazy thoughts.
Or access to caramel candy.
Yeah.
R caramel candy.
And cereal.
I would, I would, I would watch my pockets.
Bringing you one on Tuesday. I don't bring your bar, you took it on my calendar.
You have?
Yes. Get what you call it for Janet.
Get her a chunky Tootsie.
No, I wouldn't do that, chunkies aren't nice.
Can you even buy them?
Yeah.
Put her list in before I, or she just kind of.
Sorry, I don't know if you should eat.
No.
There's a basket of candy.
Yeah, same. Sure. That's right.
I already put on my list, get what you call it for Janet.
I'm cooking, man. I'm cooking, man, I'm making food for the week.
I think Victoria wants us to take her.
I guess they call it Danport Works, but it's right, I think Danport. And she's a, she's a.
Yes, yes, they were. My, my wife and both my boys, they were all expired. She couldn't travel.
But what are you, what are you gonna do? These kids have the father's habit, right? But no, she.
She totally asked that. You know what, I'm okay with it, she's a waitress, she's a filmmaker, I get it. But she totally asked that, I mean, I knew she was not, I knew she was kind of social searching, she was talking about when you're traveling and she went and gave you flyers and she dropped off.
Well, exactly.
She's still a bitch at that time, she's gonna stay, she's pushing her work.
She screwed up and she was young.
Sales, communication, business stuff, maybe, but she's in business, it's great, but.
Sweetheart, awesome, thank you so much.
And I think they're both wonderful.
I love you.
I love.
I love.
All right. Well, and here's the thing. I get it, that's.
Yeah. Pretty good. I personally, we always let her chocolate.
Agreed, agreed. Although I kind of am about the peanut butter, but, but, yeah.
They're just gonna sing like this. They need a three months.
Yeah. So I feel like I'm getting allergic to turkey.
But.
She realizes that.
If you let that happen, it's another eight thousand dollars, right? Thirty-two K for your four-year college.
Yeah, so, but she loves it.
Go to your room, refrigerator.
Experience.
Although she, but, well, I don't know, I guess the jury's still wrong, but she, she, no, she, she didn't know and of course I'm interested in her son because she was in the shop. So she has a freedom of being a big.
Uh huh.
Right.
She, she.
Well.
Fairly quickly, so we're really proud of that.
Right, well, I, I just look at myself and there's some, there's some things I would like to have. It's just. It's good, it's good. And so.
Well.
Exactly.
You had yourself to the gym.
That's up to the, that's up to the individual, bound it.
That's funny, that's funny, that's actually good.
All right, let's just check in. Where do you feel like we've been on the compass today? Where have we as a team been?
I feel, I feel like I've been in the feeling quadrant quite a bit. Even talking about the don't judge me felt feeling like to me, but then also maybe I'm thinking it's not, trying to be a little analytical about this, I don't know.
Yeah, what do you think?
Maybe the moral as well, what's the right?
Yeah.
A little bit. I think I can feel that from you a fair bit when you're sharing the stories, it's kind of getting to, I believe this because I had these informative experiences. I certainly haven't facilitated that out of the group very much, so you've gone there on your own. I think you haven't really been in acting and I wanna congratulate you on that because we typically wanna go right there, especially groups that, that wanna get something done. And what happens is we go there too fast and we haven't done enough of the others to know what we're even trying to fix when we move into action. So I kind of appreciate that. I don't, I haven't felt you feeling impatient to get there. I don't know.
And that is a challenge, I think, sometimes with teachers because a lot of educators are like, gotta check, get that off, you know, get this done, get this done. So we have to caution them, you know, let's don't, let's not run off the ears of this area. Figure out something we have to do first.
Well, policymakers, very much.
Oh, yeah.
We're doers and we wanna do, we gotta get it done and we're gonna fix this problem. We know what the problem is, we're gonna fix it. We're gonna set the policy or make the budget decision or whatever it is and if we haven't actually diagnosed the right problem, we just keep fixing the wrong thing and we never actually get to the heart of it. And for me personally, that's what I feel like I've been doing my entire career, is kind of working on stuff that didn't get to the heart of, how do we deal with these disparities? By race, we gotta get in and talk about race, so. Have you been reluctant to go into any of those quadrants? So I guess I ask, where were we as a group? Where were you personally?
I guess I, it's hard to, it's hard to do one without the other, but coming in, I think the reason I'm even all sitting on the table is that we believe and we feel that there's something that we as a board need to address and work to do and I think the thinking part completely, we need the knowledge base to figure out what that is and that they come in and I, I know it's right in my head and, you know, I think that one of the best things I can point out last week and reiterate it today is that regardless of what you know to be right, you're still act against it sometimes, so just getting the thinking part, be able to recognize when that's happening makes it then easier to address and maybe stop it the next time it happens.
I was thinking, I was thinking about, maybe you asked us, first you about a student from Chicago, a student from Chicago, and I'm just gonna say, I had a moment because I, right now, don't know the student, the black student from Chicago. I don't have a, in the big schools today, a student today, and I felt like I was not doing my job because I didn't have that personal experience to help guide me, to help me unpack these stories and not overgeneralize or, you know what I mean? Intellectually, I can, you said, maybe you can make up stories and I make up all kinds of stories, but I need to be, I feel like I need to be grounded in real people. With an emotional heart feeling connection is what I feel like I'm liking now and so I feel like I need to find a way to build some relationships so that I can be more comfortable. So just sharing about that there.
I had one there too, to be clear.
Do you?
I'm a black.
I mean, I don't think that's.
It's those, they don't have that perspective.
Yeah.
And my sort of rationalizing, with ACT, we have various groups that, we have two schools in Chicago to learn about their, the climate experience and how as an organization we can help as well, that's one of those excuses, but not us. And I'm personally, and that's the fault that I have in these schools. I, I feel like I have, that's something I need to work on.
It's really a tough question in our field of like, how do we help people address issues of race, particularly when they are racially isolated? So I grew up in Tipton, which was all white until I was a junior in high school, and I learned a lot about race. It didn't all have to happen because people of color were informing me about, you know, there was, my teachers were able to bring a lot to me, we on the internet, they were able to learn a lot. So I think there is a lot we can do and I think that there's really no comparison to life experience. Now, you can end up having bad experiences and so that's always a challenge too, is to get in a space where you end up with a bad experience and you have a whole, now you've gone down a path in making sense of what it means to be a poor school in Iowa City, a predominantly black school in Iowa City, et cetera. So there's, you always wanna keep problematizing, keep coming back. What do I really know? What evidence do I have? What's a different interpretation about what I just experienced? That's the biggest one we have, is people experience an event, ten people have experienced the same event and you have ten completely different interpretations of what happened and they're all right in somewhere or another. So, yeah, those personal and direct experiences really are hard to compare to anything else.
Because that, that was the connection I made, I had that same thought of, I didn't have that personal experience, that if you don't have that, then the stories that you hear become the only source of truth because that's all there is.
Right.
It's a big disconnect.
And thank goodness as school board members, you have access to stories. Thank goodness people will come to the listening post and talk to you.
Will you?
Thank goodness, that is data and it's skewed data. It's data from their perspective, their interpretation, and so it's not bad to have, but it's not all you need. So that balance of, yeah, where do you prioritize how you spend your time as a school? Because y'all spend a lot of time. That's really not a trick. All right, well, thanks for checking in on that. We've got about fifteen minutes and I really just wanted to at least touch on how we think about equity leadership more broadly and how the implicit bias work can fit within that. And then to invite you to also think about how as a board, you want to step out and say, so how do we exercise leadership toward equity as a board? What are the opportunities that we have and what does that look like, what does it mean? We have some frameworks that we use and I'll just maybe quickly share some, there are other people that have different frameworks. I'm working with a colleague in Chicago who does a lot of board development around equity-focused issues and we're kind of collaborating on how can she use some of ours and we use some of hers and a lot of it's the same, but there's always little nuances that are there. Our work has actually been late in the past five years, really I would say actually the past fifteen years, in predominantly white states. So Ohio, Wisconsin and Iowa, that's where our deepest work has been. Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, like we've had some urban as well, but my interest, being from Iowa, has been states like Iowa. And so we have different experiences than, so she's in New Jersey right now and, and people have different exposure to people of color and different demographics within the student population and within the workforce and so some of these issues are a little bit different. So I'll at least give you a kind of hint into where, where we are with that and what we think it could look like, but I thought it might be helpful for just you to just kind of talk together a little bit and maybe you should let me know if this is stuff you already have done. We can fly past it because I got lots of different slides I can pull up, but I was kind of curious, as you sort of step out of that, so we've been down in the weeds on implicit bias, if you could step out for a minute and say, what are your equity concerns more broadly for the district? I think it would be helpful just to kind of get a handle on, so then how do you exercise leadership? So what are your equity concerns? It could be interests, I mean, it doesn't have to be a problem, we don't have to problematize it right now.
More diverse minority hiring in our building administration and just our administration of students, but the primary focus on building administration as well as teachers.
Been on the compass today. Where have we as a team been?
I feel like I've been in the feeling quadrant quite a bit. Even talking about the don't judge me felt feeling like to me. But then also maybe I'm thinking slightly toward the little analytical about this other.
Maybe the moral as well?
A little bit. I think I can feel that from you a fair bit when you're sharing the stories. It's kind of getting to, I believe this because I had these informative experiences. I certainly haven't facilitated that out of the group very much. So you've gone there on your own. You bring them everywhere. I think you haven't really been in acting and I want to congratulate you on that. Because we typically want to go right there. Especially groups that want to get something done. And what happens is we go there too fast. We haven't done enough of the others to know what we're even trying to fix when we move into action. So I kind of appreciate that. I haven't felt you feeling impatient to get there. I don't know.
And that is intelligent sometimes with teachers. A lot of educators are like, gotta check, get that off, you know, get this done, get this done. So we have to caution them, you know, let's don't, let's not run over here to this area. Figure out something we have to do.
Well, policymakers, very much.
Oh, yeah.
We're doers and we want to do, we gotta get it done and we're gonna fix this problem. We know what the problem is, we're gonna fix it. We're gonna set the policy or make the budget decision or whatever it is. And if we haven't actually diagnosed the right problem, we just keep fixing the wrong thing and we never actually get to the heart of it. And for me personally, that's why I feel like I've been doing my entire career. Is kind of working on stuff that didn't get to the heart of, how do we deal with these disparities by race? We gotta get in and talk about race. Have you been reluctant to go into any of those quadrants? So I guess I swear we as a group, where were you personally?
I guess I, it's hard to, it's hard to do one without the other. But coming in, I think the reason I'm even all sitting on the table is that we believe and we feel that there's something that we as a board need to address and work to do. And I think the thinking part comes into play of we need the knowledge base to figure out what that is. And that they come in and I, I know it's right in my head. And, you know, I think that one of the best things that you pointed out last week and reiterated it today is that regardless of what you know to be right, you still act against it sometimes. So just getting the thinking part, be able to recognize when that's happening makes it then easier to address maybe something the next time it happens.
Just thinking of, I was thinking about, maybe asked us first to think about our student from Chicago. One student from Chicago and I'm just gonna say I had a moment because I, right now, don't know the student. A black student from Chicago. I don't have a, in the, in schools today, a student today. And I felt like I was not doing my job. Because I didn't have that personal experience to help guide me, to help me unpack these stories and not overgeneralize. Or, you know what I mean? Intellectually, I can, you said maybe you can make up stories and I make up all kinds of stories. But I need to be, I feel like I need to be grounded in real people. With an emotional heart feeling connection is what I feel like I'm lacking right now. And so I feel like I need to find a way to build some relationships so that I can have more. Just sharing that there.
I had one there too.
Do you?
A lot of black people.
I mean, I don't think that's...
It's those, like, they don't have that perspective.
Yeah.
And I sort of rationalize it. With ACTD, you have various groups that we take two schools in Chicago to learn about their, the climate experience and how as an organization we can help as well. That's some of those excuses, but not us. And I'm personal, and that's the problem that I have experienced. I feel like I have, that's something I need to work on.
It's really a tough question in our field of like, how do we help people address issues of race, particularly when they are racially isolated? So I grew up in Tipton, which was all white until I was a junior in high school. And I learned a lot about race. It didn't all have to happen because people of color were informing me about, you know, there was, my teachers were able to bring a lot to me. We on the internet, they were able to learn a lot. So I think there is a lot we can do. And I think that there's really no comparison to life experience. Now, you can end up having bad experiences. And so that's always a challenge too, is to get in a space where you end up with a bad experience and you have a whole, now you've gone down a path in making sense of what it means to be a poor school in Iowa City, a predominantly black school in Iowa City, et cetera. So there's, you always want to keep problematizing, keep coming back. What do I really know? What evidence do I have? What's a different interpretation about what I just experienced? That's the biggest one we have, is people experience an event, 10 people have experienced the same event and you have 10 completely different interpretations of what happened. And they're all right in some way or another. So, yeah, those personal and direct experiences really are hard to compare to anything else.
I guess that was the connection I made. I had the same thought of I didn't have that personal experience. That if you don't have that, then the stories that you hear become the only source of truth. Because that's all there is. It's a big disconnect.
And thank goodness as school board members, you have access to stories. Thank goodness people will come to the listening post and talk to you. Thank goodness, that is data. And it's skewed data. It's data from their perspective, their interpretation. And so it's not bad to have, but it's not all you need. So that balance of, yeah, where do you prioritize having to spend your time as a school board? Because y'all are spending a lot of time. That's what we appreciate. All right. Well, thanks for checking in on that. We've got about 15 minutes and I really just wanted to at least touch on how we think about equity leadership more broadly and how the implicit bias work can fit within that. And then to invite you to also think about how as a board, you want to step out and say, so how do we exercise leadership toward equity as a board? What are the opportunities that we have and what does that look like, what does it mean? We have some frameworks that we use and I'll just maybe quickly share some. There are other people who have different frameworks. I'm working with a colleague in Chicago who does a lot of board development around equity focused issues. And we're collaborating on how can she use some of ours and we use some of hers. A lot of it's the same, but there's always a little nuance there. Our work has actually been late, in the past five years, really, I would say actually the past 15 years, in predominantly white states. So Ohio, Wisconsin, and Iowa, that's where our deepest work has been. Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, like we had some urban as well. But my interest, being from Iowa, has been states like Iowa. And so we have different experiences than, so she's in New Jersey right now. And people have different exposure to people of color and different demographics within the student population and within the workforce. And so some of the issues are a little bit different. So I'll at least give you a kind of hint into where we are with that and what we think it could look like. But I thought it might be helpful for just you to just kind of talk together a little bit. And maybe you should let me know if this is stuff you already have done. Fly past it because I got lots of different slides I can pull up. But I was kind of curious, as you sort of step out of that, so we've been down in the weeds on implicit bias. If you could step out for a minute and say, what are your equity concerns more broadly for the district? I think it would be helpful just to kind of get a handle on. So then how do you exercise leadership? So what are your equity concerns? It could be interests. I mean, it doesn't have to be a problem. We don't have to problematize it right now.
More diverse minority hiring in our building administration and just our administration. But the primary focus on building administration as well as teachers. And again, it does connect to the climate. So a matter of, once we get here, keep it on here.
Exactly.
So...
I mean, that's...
Yeah, making sure that the environment and the climate is something that is supportive of bringing diversity into our schools and those roles.
So you're thinking of professional climate? Is that a way to describe the climate you're talking about?
I think so. I mean, both that encompasses not just their colleagues, but also their interactions with families. So it's that. It's like the total package.
I think so. Student climate, student climate, even broader district climate. Because all of those spaces have to come about to pull the group people to the area.
And then in the diversity hiring too, advancement and growing our own.
What else?
The elementary school innovation, balance and work.
The, the, the...
It's, oh, restating with student climate, but you know, based on, you know, the surveys. Kids in the district are not experiencing school in the same ways. And some very positive and some very negative and there's some between them. That's probably...
The other thing on that is the concern around disproportionality from the discipline standpoint. But then also affective achievement, the benefit achievement gap is not closing nearly fast enough.
I don't know where you put, it'd probably be in the climate, but high expectations for all. Not, not too... All over the track.
Yes. Ensuring a safe environment for all of our students. I'm thinking more for our LGBTQ students who struggle quite a bit in feeling safe and being able to be themselves and be accepted.
If I can just throw this in, I'm sorry. Successful path, well, successful pathways for all and not, not making sure that there's a pathway for those that choose not to go to college to be successful and then to have skills that puts them on a path for success as well. That just because a kid goes into a classroom and has an interest in going to college that we have, we have ways for them to be in success as well.
What else? The only thing I think is in regards, but I really did, we just, oh, yeah, we got to figure out something. Other equity issues?
Making sure we create situations for, sometimes we're all voices, we're heard, community voices. And not just allow it for the people that we tend to agree with or that tend to be supportive of our framework. And by our, I'm not talking about as a group, I'm talking individually, that we have to be willing to stretch ourselves. And stretching ourselves and go ahead, even if it's something that I don't personally agree with, but looking at it as a framework of what's good for the entire community of ICPSD and not just a fraction.
Other things?
Trying to, I guess, create my thought and answer the question directly. It's not a specific concern, but I think it's looking for long-term sustainability in the things that we do instead of short-term fixes. I think that in, in regards to equity issues in the past that are very reactive in the moment of, okay, this thing reared its head, let's try and fix that and not really change the system.
Can we react to those issues?
And speaking of long-term sustainability, it's that, it's a, it's a community effort. I mean, we're a system, we're in a broader system. And our elementary school issues are largely from housing policies. You know, how housing, you know, neighborhoods get developed. So we can do our bit, but we're not gonna make long-term sustainable changes just with efforts on schools, but they have to have partners within the counties, Jones County and, you know, transportation and, you know, the kinds of things those schools can focus on.
Other things? I went through some of your documents to see what you had stated. And I think the only thing you haven't specifically said is curriculum, although I'm sure...
Um, the pathways.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I have that on the number of the next one. Oh, so my question then was, so your equity concerns, I was fitting on kind of topics and then my next slide was, I ran out of room. So it was what, among what students? So what are the students? And I may have missed another particular group of students. Although I didn't hear a say very much of specific groups of students in any of that. As a matter of fact, we weren't very particular about what we mean by diversity. When you say diversity in hiring, what do you mean?
I mean, just my perspective, teachers of color and not just African-American, but teachers that represent our student body on the elementary side. Diversity, that more males in the classrooms, because we struggle from just my perspective of having men in the classroom. So it's just, it's not just color. And it's not just African-American when we do talk about color. Because I want to see more Hispanic teachers, more Asian teachers, more teachers with physical disabilities.
Yeah, the gender diversity is, you're right on there. And I think we had something at one time, didn't we Steve, that when it came to elementary principals, you know, how many male elementary principals we had. As far as the gender equity in that part, we kind of swung pendulum one way pretty strong. But that's important.
So again, here's, here's where we were talking over here and yet we weren't being very specific by race.
Well, that's still, that's like the first exercise when we had at the beginning.
So I would encourage you to be, to remember that and to try to be as clear and specific as you can as you're thinking about what are my equity concerns, what do I really mean by that? And then that becomes a way to think about, so then in what ways can I exercise leadership? At what level are you best able to serve your equity concerns? Is another question I pose to school boards. What my equity focused actions look like? I want you to have a theory of change. This is what it will take to move a district toward addressing my equity concerns. This is what it means for a board, this is what it means for administrations, this is what it means for school leaders, this is what it means for teachers, this is what it means for our support staff, this is what it means for our certified staff. A theory of what it takes to change a system is an important thing for a board to share. Otherwise, you're gonna end up going to hot button issues, number one. That's the number one thing we see, is equity is whatever equity issue is at the front of us at a meeting. And it's very hard, as you say, to do long-term systemic and strategic planning when you're just sort of jumping from one thing to the next. So what are those long-term changes you want to see and then what does it look like? What would it look like to get there? And what's your role to help the system get there? And that's a hard part for policy boards to figure out. And it's something that I would love to work with you more on. I don't exactly know where you are moving away from Harvard, whether you actually... I don't know. I don't know where you are, but I think that's part of the question you have to ask is, what is our work? What does it look like? And what's the work of others in the system? And we have a way of thinking about it, and I'll be straightforward. I've got a way of thinking about it, actually, I mean, I think you actually need to literally say, what is our work and what does it look like month to month? Like, how am I gonna spend my time as an individual board member and how does the board spend our time? Month to month, as you think about then year to year and get to the bigger stuff. These are our theory of change principles. I don't always put democracy in education as the grounding principle, but it really is. And I think it's good to be clear about that. And for me, that comes out of John Dewey's theory of democracy. It comes out of Amy Gutman's work from there. And also the work of critical race theorists who talk about what it means to have a democracy when you've got minorities within a democratic rule and how that plays out. So that's a grounding that we have. But then the actual work of leadership comes out of adaptive leadership from Ron Heifetz at the Kennedy School of Government. Learning organizations and systems thinking is primarily Peter Sengi, although also Margaret Queeby, who talks about complexity science and that lessons from complexity science in organizations. Critical race theory, which is in, came out of legal, it started really in the legal field, but now has gone to a broader way of thinking about theoretically understanding race and its place in education and in politics and other aspects like that. So we have a, there's a lot of tenants in there that are informative about how to really tackle issues of race. And then we also use improvement science and implementation science. So improvement science, we were around helping when Tony Bright left the Chicago Post Association on School Research to head up the Carnegie Foundation for the Advancement of Teaching. And when they, they are, the Carnegie Foundation is a operating foundation. So they don't give grants, but they have millions of dollars to spend on something that they want to do around teaching. So when they hire an executive director, they come with the idea. So his idea was, how do we do rapid improvement over a long period of time in schools? And so we're using, we use a lot of the same ideas that really come out of healthcare, about rapid prototyping and taking a bite at a time in a very systematic way in order to make progress. What's that, ligandal? Yeah, yeah. It's, it's all of those. We're all kind of developing around the same time. So we use a lot of that in our work. And then implementation science also, out of the National Implementation Research Network, where they've actually said, what works to take evidence-based practices to scale? And what are the kinds of things you have to do to have a pilot project actually suddenly now change a whole system?
Do you have some links, articles, books that you share in those spaces? Especially, well, actually, any of them, but maybe actually any of them, any of them, Paul is.
Great. I would be happy to...
Improvement and implementation are really interesting to me.
It's been really fascinating. It's really, it's about... And we don't, the schools of education don't prepare administrators to lead change in big systems. This is not part of, they're good instructional leaders, that's the big thing. Over the last three years, to become good instructional leaders. And there is focus on that and I think it's great. I actually love it. It's really important. But there's not that kind of, there's more of the instruction side of it and not the leadership side of it. So it's work that I think you'll want to think about, but here's my big challenge to you. And I put this from my perspective of what I know about where you are. If you are, my understanding is you're looking at the Carver model and you're maybe moving away from it. And if you are, where are you moving to? And how do you ensure that equity is a part of what you're moving to? And how are those decisions about what you're moving to, what implications do they have for equity? And my, my caution is, I think of Carver as setting parameters for work. If you want to be more than that or different than that, my fear is so many boards go into, so then we're gonna go do the work. But you can't do the work. You're volunteers. You have a whole professional staff. What's the right work then? What does it mean to be more? And frankly, I like a much more proactive board personally, around equity issues. But it doesn't mean you're in there making decisions for buildings. That is totally counter to my theory of change. But I think you need to talk about that as a board. And I'm particularly interested in what are the equity implications for wherever you land on what is the work that you do. So I offer that too. That's kind of my little plug in the last 30 seconds. You really have to figure out how to ensure the work is getting done, not do the work. But that's the, that's the, and, and that's in a place like Iowa City, that's the pressure. What are you doing? You know, what are you doing? Yeah, that doesn't feel like you're doing something. It very much, you very much are doing something when you're setting policy and you're monitoring. It's not very sensy, but it's a, it's how you do laundry changes.
It's how you do it, yeah.
Anyway, I was unabashedly on my soapbox for 30 seconds. And we're over time, so I, I wanted to make sure you got as much of the 10 hours that we could give you. And I know we cut corners throughout, so I hope it was useful. And I would love you to fill out an exit ticket. You don't have to right now. But you can send me an email or whatever to just let me know kind of what worked, what didn't work. And how we can do this differently and better to support you.
Very, very glad you asked.
I love your engagement too. Appreciate your honesty. Because you were really digging into the right stuff.
That just be on, up there, just to that, that same address that you said you just liked this one time.
It's certainly at westman.com. Yeah, sure. Yeah. That would be great. Yeah, I'll send that out to you as well.
Okay.
Sorry.